They're gonna start it for me. All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'm waiting for the mics to get turned on, but if everyone can join us now at 7:30 on this March 15th. A couple of ground rules to go over before we start this committee as a whole. The floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the City Council on matters that are on this evening's agenda. We ask that persons wishing to address the City Council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the City Council as a whole. And of course profanity will not be used or tolerated in any form during these conversations or with the public comment. We do have six items on this evening's agenda. And for the sake of time and efficiency, why don't we just dive right in with the first item of the Fire Hall eatery? The presentation on 3111 Meadow Fire Station redevelopment proposal. And for this, Joelle, and when you're ready, floor is yours.
Thank you Mayor and Council. It's great to be back in this format. I was just talking to folks tonight that I think I did this format twice before COVID kicked in and I haven't been back since. So we're very happy tonight to present the CoAction team and their proposal for Fire Hall. Which is a redevelopment of the property that the city owns, the fire station property that the city owns on Meadow Drive. The focus is to introduce Council and the community to this concept. And as we all know, this property has been for sale for quite some time. So we're looking to get some feedback from you, give you an opportunity to ask questions. And ultimately try to get some direction from Council as to whether this is a project you'd like to see us continue to spend time with this team to move forward. I did include in your agenda packet, a lot of summary information about the proposal. As well as some of the site planning issues and zoning issues that we initially identified. That's not our purpose tonight. Our purpose tonight is to let this team present their project. So in a second, I'm gonna introduce Samantha Doro from the CoAction team. And she is joined by three other members of her team that are, that have been working on the amendments to the proposal. And then also, I'm sure she'll announce that we have two members from Leaky Keg here as well. So if there are questions for any of those folks, I'm sure they'll provide you with an opportunity to ask those towards the end. So I'm gonna turn it over to Samantha and let her make the proposal for Fire Hall.
It's nice to see everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to start by just introducing ourselves briefly. So my name is Samantha Doro. I grew up here in the Northwest suburbs. This is my home. And I am a entrepreneur. I actually started in the Young Entrepreneurs Academy in Arlington Heights, which has grown to the rest of the Northwest suburbs. A really cool program. And so I'm excited today to bring before you this idea of the Fire Hall. And before I get started, I wanna let Arthur Wang introduce himself and then Selena McFarland.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name's Arthur Wang. I've spent the last 15 years of so my life in a combination of food and beverage and real estate. Most recently, I worked for Marriott International. Right now, I'm working for Century 21 Affiliated, which is the largest franchise holder in the world for Century 21. Specializing in development and redevelopment of hotels for about five years at First Hospitality Group. So very intimately knowledgeable about the development of real estate, especially repurposing. Yeah, I think that my passion is with food and beverage because I think that brings together communities. I think that this is the future in terms of kinda creating the anchor commercial area for the downtown Rolling Meadows. So I think that this is kind of a cool project. I think that the idea of a food hall has always been very interesting to me. Because I think that the idea of collaborating and creating a coalition of small businesses is like beneficial for the community overall. So that's a little bit on me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Selene McFarland and I have been within the IT industry for about six years now. So I've worked in a variety of different industries such as financial institutions, food storage. And currently, I'm actually working in retail sector. So I'm hoping to bring all of that IT knowledge specifically about data and software to the Fire Hall and to CoAction as a whole. So thank you.
All right, so now we're gonna jump into the presentation fully. Not sure if the clicker is working. Oh, maybe it's just delayed. Okay, so that was our brief introduction about ourselves. Basically, you know, it's a long meeting today. I think we can, if we were to boil the Fire Hall project down into like four really important tenants. It'd be collaboration, cooperation, community, and growth. So I think this project is really set up to, well, I should start from the beginning in case not everybody knows. So we plan to own the building and rent out tenant booths to independent vendors. So one of which being Leaky Keg, who's here with us today. So they would run their own business completely separate from us within our building. So within that space, we hope to foster this collaboration and cooperation between businesses like Leaky Keg. An independent charcuterie board booth, a cocktail booth, a Thai restaurant, a bakery and coffee shop. Different individual booths like that. So really, we wanna transform an old community center into a new community gathering place and center for people to come enjoy. I think the idea of a Fire Hall is so exciting because when you have a diverse group of friends and a diverse group of people. It's nice to know you can go somewhere where everybody has options and everyone's gonna be able to get the type of food or drink that they're excited about. So, there we go. So like I mentioned, one of the main ways our business is gonna make money is through rent. So the rent will be paid again by small businesses like Leaky Keg, like restaurants. The beverage component is gonna be from the cocktail bar that we will run and operate ourselves. Professional services is a really interesting part of this business. What we wanted to focus on was letting people do what they're passionate about and not having them get bogged down by what they're not passionate about. So like Selena brought up, she has a lot of experience in the IT sector. Not everybody loves IT and running point of sale service and making sure all those pieces of the business are well put together. Same with accounting. Not everybody loves doing the numbers, filing the taxes. So that's gonna be another portion that we're able to alleviate and offer those services to the small businesses that wanna focus on their passion. Like brewing great craft beer or producing a great biscotti or croissant. Another service we plan to provide is a centralized catering manager. So that catering manager, we would pay the salary out of our fund. And then they would get a 7% commission on any business that chose to use their services. They'd pay a 7% commission on whatever business was stirred up by that catering manager. Oh. Bear with me, click here. Oh. All right. I think it is only going forward, not backwards, so. Second manager's up.
There we go.
Yeah, I think, yeah, she's got it.
All right. Part of our business model is we wanna test the concept. We don't wanna build out a multimillion dollar building all at once and then hope that people enjoy the concept and wanna come join us in our space. So we've broken it down into three phases. We feel it's the most responsible thing to do. So in phase one, we're really just restoring and bringing to life the first floor. That's where the six vendor booths will be located. The seating, we're also gonna make sure there's adequate parking for that first floor. Yeah, those are the, those are the big steps of phase one. It's just to get the first floor of the fire station open. Part of the design elements is we do wanna keep a lot of what used to be, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but Fogarty Fire Station historically. We wanna keep those big overhead doors. We wanna keep the unfinished, we wanna finish it, like polish the concrete. But leave that aesthetic there because again, it's about transforming an existing community center into a revitalized version of itself. So that would be the design element of the first floor. As discussed, parking is one of the things that will be done in phase one. There is. Site plan here with the parking. With the parking shown. So we've really, our construction partner, John, has really worked closely with the building department to try to figure out the best way we can maximize all of those parking spaces. We would love to have some more patio space, but we're trying to do our best to work with the constraints that we have and meet the city's needs. So that will be a big part of phase one. In phase two, if phase one is successful, we're gonna expand the dining space and the operating space into that second floor. So that will effectively double our operating and dining space. An important thing that we wanna do in phase two is kind of separate the atmospheres, if you will. We'd like to keep the first floor super family friendly, family oriented. And then the second floor is gonna be more of a adult experience, I guess. That's where the cocktail bar and the Leaky Keg, the brewery component is gonna be located. So we want this to be a place where people wanna come hang out and spend time. There's gonna be Bago, there's gonna be games, vintage video games, bocci ball, stuff like that. We wanna make it a really inviting place that people wanna come out and spend time at. And we also wanna allow people the distinction between the two environments. If that's something that's, they're not interested in, they'll be able to stay on the first floor and partake in the food. Another thing that's important about this second floor though, is we plan to be incredibly active in the community. So we want to host plenty of like charity events and community get togethers. And the second floor will allow us that space while still remaining open to the public to host events and to get the community together and have larger gatherings. As part of phase three, we really wanna tie in and focus on those outdoor spaces. That might be pretty rudimentary in phase one. So in phase one, we just plan to have picnic tables with umbrellas. In phase three, we wanna go back and spend some more time on that. Give it a roof for the hot summer months. Do some nice lighting, some fans, some heating so that it'll be tenable. Not just for the few short months in Chicago that we have nice weather, but for hopefully the majority of three seasons. As far as what you would see on opening day, Leaky Keg would be there. A coffee bar and bakery, a cocktail bar, a charcuterie booth that does wine, cheese, meats, and wine pairing. And then a Thai restaurant. So that is what you could look forward to seeing on opening day. And then obviously, if opening day goes well, some of those components get moved up to the second floor. That'll open up some space for some additional restaurant booths. So we're really excited to gauge the community's interest and see what they would like to see there. In the beginning of this discussion, we got asked what cooperative catering meant. So we wanted just to put a slide in here to highlight what that means to us. And again, one of the main ideas of this business is coming together and offering scale that these individual businesses will not have on their own. So it might be very expensive for a small business to hire a catering manager or have just one point of sale system. So this is something that we feel like we can come together as a group and offer a far discounted rate to. Because we'll have many businesses utilizing those services and helping pay for those services. So again, to reiterate what cooperative catering means to us, is that we would have one catering manager for the multiple restaurants within the space. And they would all get to utilize and pay for their share pro rata, which makes more sense to us than them each having their individual catering managers and the salaries and, you know, health insurance that comes with that. So as part of our, as part of our presentation and as part of us pondering if this is the right space for us, we did some market analysis. And basically, we made concentric circles around the Fire Hall, Fire Hall's location. And then identified what food and beverage restaurants and outlets there already are in those spaces. So you can kinda see, we did a breakdown. Within a mile, there are only six restaurants of which it, of which they were not the ones that had the most reviews and the most interaction within Rolling Meadows. Those were further out in those concentric circles. So we point this out because we're excited to be, you know, hopefully a huge component there and be very involved in the community. And we've identified an opportunity for us and possibly a need for you guys to, you know, give the consumers what they're looking for and give them that outlet that's nearby that they can walk to and bike to in the summer months. We know there's a lot of development in that area, so we hope to capture some foot business as well as passerbys. And then just as a proof of concept, we wanted to give some examples of where this is already being done and where it's being done very successfully. So there's some examples here. I think all the board members got the printouts, so you can read a little bit about these different markets. The last one on the list, Broadway Food Hall, Arthur was involved in. So it's just a nice thing to know that we've done things like this before. So in closing, we're really excited to the prospective opportunity to join the city of Rolling Meadows in their goal to revitalize that area and bring an outlet to the consumers that they're excited to go to. If you guys have any questions at this point?
Yeah, thank you Samantha, Selena, and Arthur for the presentation on Fire Hall. This would be the time for Council to ask any questions or address any concerns or share any comments. Alderman, Pesessi, and then O'Brien?
So my, you know, excellent presentation. The, my biggest concern, and I'm sure the Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission's biggest concern will be the parking. I'm sure it's a concern of yours as well. With phase one, I think the parking will most likely be ample to cover that. But as you go through the phases, where would you be looking to get additional parking?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So first, I wanna point out that we view that as a good problem to have. If we're successful and we're growing and we're building and we have the need for more parking, that means that the consumers are really happy with the fact that we're there. And actually, we've already started the process of looking for additional parking. So we've been in contact with the church directly behind to gauge if they would be interested in leasing us some of their parking spaces. They were not super interested, so now we are addressing other small businesses in that area. There's the Comet Custard right there that is not open during the winter months. So that'll probably be the next avenue we go down. We also inquired very early on about the vacant Taco Bell right next door. And we were told it's really hard for people in this city to get in contact with the owners of that land. But we are very open to exploring all of the possibilities and doing whatever we can to alleviate those parking struggles.
So, I mean, in looking at your parking diagram here.
Yeah.
Are the parking spaces, I know how it's currently configured. You got like a piece of land next to the fire station. And then you have that little, I don't know if it categorizes as a road or whatever, between the church and the fire station. There's parking spaces along that road that butt up against the firehouse property. Are those parking spaces part of that plan or is that plan just for that, to be developed?
Yes, so my understanding is that's an easement. I don't know, is it?
Yeah, that's a dedicated easement. That was done years ago for the benefit, I believe, of the church. That, that is a dedicated easement that I believe was done in 1989. And for the benefit of the church, but we've explored sharing that. Because our busy time will not be their busy time. We often, we actually looked at possibly not having the Fire Hall open on Sundays until maybe noon. Where that way they can utilize that space and actually probably share some of our parking during the church hours in exchange.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, over the years, the property that was originally dedicated to the firehouse had been granted easements on both the south side and the west side, making it more challenging today.
Okay, yeah, and that would, that would be probably a good, good solution. Cause I do know, I am actually, in all fairness, I am a member of that church.
Okay.
The.
We like the church. We like to share.
The, those, those spots aren't 100% necessary, except sometimes on Sunday. Especially when you get into, you know, the Christmas time and.
Sure.
And Easter and that. And then there's a handful of events throughout the year. So, so being closed, particularly Sunday, I do know that there's multiple congregations there. So I'm not sure about the size of some of the other ones. But I appreciate your, you thinking about that, that whole thing and the Sunday hours is really a good thing.
Yeah, so if you look on the opening day page, I can attempt to get there with this remote, who's not my friend. Oh my, okay. Well, so if you, you take a look, on Sunday, we don't open until noon. And that was in an effort to, you know, like we said, the tenants of this business are to cooperate, collaborate, grow together. And we're very willing and open to doing that. And this is just one of those, one of those scenarios in which I feel like it's best for the community to all cooperate.
And I would just say, continue to work with them because I do know they have other congregations there. And I think one of them actually starts around noon.
Okay, yeah.
So.
We can continue those conversations.
So, okay, thank you. That was my main concern that I was asked by residents.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I know you're trying to be considerate when addressing your questions to Samantha. But don't forget to speak into the mic so that way it can be picked up and recorded as well. Yeah, if you can turn your head and keep the mic nearby, that'll help. Alderman, O'Brien?
Great, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thanks for the presentation. Certainly in favor of entity like this. Just a handful of questions based on the write-up too. Am I understanding correctly, like phase one, certainly get the first floor? But I think in the write-up, it was saying any of the cooking or prep areas would be on the second floor? So I know for like a charcuterie board and things like that, you probably don't need kitchenware other than refrigeration. But for like the Thai restaurant, the coffee, is that's gonna be on the second floor even though when it's phase one on the first floor?
So what we wanna do again, it's about gaining scale with all these small businesses coming together and cooperating together that they wouldn't have alone. So like, for example, we plan to have one central dishwashing station that will be in phase two up on the second floor. And so like a lot of restaurants in the city, right? They'll have sometimes their prep area or the dishwashing stations also on other floors. And then at the non-busy times, they'll, you know, get their dishes back there, stuff like that. So that allows us to maximize the customer facing space that we have. So yeah, absolutely, in phase two, when we're able to relocate some of that prep work. Some of the dishwashing station, stuff like that, up to the second floor. It will open up the possibility for even more booths on the first floor.
Great, thanks. Um, just a couple of ones, cause I know you're clearly working with staff, so any variances and things like that, parking, I know that's in great hands. For the professional services, that's roughly, I know these are total estimate numbers, that's roughly 25% of your income.
Yep.
So I'm assuming, is that gonna be offered, services offered to non-tenants or tenants only? Like the six booths? Or is your plan to possibly go down the street and offer your services for this portion to a non-tenant of the Fire Hall?
Yeah, a little bit of both. So one of the first components that we're bringing on is like an event coordinator. So the event coordinator, yeah, we absolutely could lease out to other, you know, I know Rep's Place has events all the time. You know, somebody who's in this industry and has experience with photographing and promoting restaurant events. We think there's definitely a need outside of our own business. Along with that, our goal for these small businesses is that they outgrow us. It's not the hope that they stay with us this entire time. The hope is that they outgrow us and we plan to maintain those relationships while they grow. So I think we'll continue to build a customer base and yeah, it won't just be the six booths, to answer your question.
Great, and then that actually kinda goes with my second to last question is clearly, based on all the great research you've done, there's interest in Thai, a coffee place, or the bar thing. Like, are there interests, like do you have potential tenants to go in? Cause that actually kinda goes with my last question. Is my only concern, and I don't wanna speak for the whole council, but what I've heard from residents too, since that place has been vacant. We don't want it to be sold and then it sits for a year.
Yeah.
Like, I didn't see in your phase timeline that, hey, phase one, you're estimating to be six months. And you'll either make a go, no-go decision at the six month mark to continue to phase two. Do you have any ballpark in timing wise? I know it's tough to do, cause it's a new venture for your group as well. But I think that's my main concern is that if this deal does move forward, that, that's one of the last places in downtown. That we don't want it to be sold and then regrettably, you clearly have as much of a vested interest as we do, cause it's your financials. It's certainly our city, but you've got a vested interest as well from a financial perspective. That we want everybody to be successful. That's just some angst I've heard from residents that we don't want it to be built or sold and then nothing come. Cause we've regrettably had that in other areas, not necessarily on the strip, but we've had it around the city.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think you hit the nail on the head. It would be in our worst interest to drag our feet. So six months is about the rough timeline. We wanna give it enough time to make sure that the, that the interest is lasting and not fleeting. But the other thing that we want to do within that six months, that we wouldn't wanna rush into say three, is gain the community's perspective. Ask the questions, have them fill out the surveys. And really put some thought into what they would like to see on the second floor and how they want the first floor, you know, rearranged with that. We're gonna be moving two booths upstairs along with stations. So we're gonna have some booths open and we wanna make sure that we're picking the right booths. And we've been working with Martha, you know, to try to identify some Rolling Meadows business people that already have a business here and are looking for this next step to try to grow their business. So we hope to keep that relationship going.
Great, thank, that's all I have, Ms. O'Brien. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I wanna stick to that point just for a moment, cause I, I've heard that same, or similar sentiment shared about the, the long-term viability. I very much appreciate the idea. I think it's extremely creative and a lot of me is for it. But you did mention when you were moving from phase one in the presentation to phase two after the projections. You did, you did state, if, if phase one is successful, then we'll move on to phase two. And it, the if is the part that, that perked my ears up. And I just wanna know if, if you guys are monitoring the growth and the progress in phase one and it's not meeting your expectations. and it's not meeting your expectations, what are the contingency plans, or what are you going to do to adapt versus abandon?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are going to be very financially and emotionally and work-wise committed to that building at that point, but it would mean that we need to reevaluate what we've done up until that point and pivot, right? So it wouldn't make sense to launch into the second floor while we're kind of finding our footing. So that is actually one of the most important reasons that Selena is on this team, is to give us the data to make these data-driven decisions, because it's possible that, like, Leaky Keg is knocking it out of the park, and everyone is there from, say, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM and loving it, but the Thai restaurant is failing, which is a problem to us, because they're part of our business. We want to make sure everyone is successful and everyone is, you know, doing well. So, to answer your question, I think it's responsible to say "if," because if we're going, if we're full speed ahead, this is going to work out, there's not going to be any problems, it's just not realistic, you know, running any business. We're going to run into these issues, these snags, and we plan to address them and move forward very quickly.
Yeah, and I agree with you that it's responsible to use the word "if" in the scenario, but I'm just curious to know if you're running these "if and then" scenarios, if you do have contingency plans in mind now, or you're going to call them as an audible when the time arrives?
Yeah, so there's already things that we're doing to kind of, let me make sure I understand your question fully. So, you're asking if there's a contingency plan right now?
What I'm saying is that you're going into this endeavor, and you have it broken down in a phased approach, and you begun with Phase One, and you presented the three phases to us as a council.
Right.
But as you're implementing each phase, and you're monitoring the growth, the progress or stagnation, hopefully it's progress, it's the former, that you also are keeping in mind that if worst-case scenarios are arriving, that you're developing some sort of contingency plans, or that you have some in mind already, that you can use to kind of shift your business model so that it stays viable and doesn't just end at Phase One?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're fairly confident, based on, like, our market research, that it's not a matter of if restaurants and beverage components will be successful, it's a matter of which ones. So I guess the best answer to your question is, we're going to be evaluating that. We're going to know it sooner than anyone, based on the data and analytics we have planned to have in place, and we're just going to do what most businesses do, reinvest more money into whatever is going well, and funnel money away from what's not. We don't plan, the "if" isn't, if stagnation is happening, how do we exit?
So your model is built on following the trends from the data that you accumulate or aggregate from the real-time experience of your patrons?
Yeah, it's built on listening to our consumers.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Budmats, Louisiana, then Mikhail?
So, I'll ask the awkward question. How deep are your pockets, that, how long would you be willing to work in Phase One and keep it going and keep pivoting until, how long would you be able to do that before you determine that you'd have to really make a large pivot?
Yeah, so, as we explained, Arthur and I both have accounting backgrounds. I appreciate the question. It's a bit too vague to answer, because how bad are we struggling? Are some venues successful and some aren't? What, I would need to know exactly what that meant in order to tell you how long we could sustain that, and different avenues we could take to sustain that, because it's going to depend, like, if we go to a lender, the lender is going to want to know exactly what's going right, exactly what's going wrong, in order for them to make any decision. So it's really hard to answer without those specifics. Like, are we 70% going well, and 30% of the businesses are not doing well?
I'm just talking in terms of not going to a lender, and your own, your corporation asset, how long can you sustain this? Because it seems to me to be a concept, and I love new concepts, and I'm all in favor of it, I'm just trying to make sure that you've got the financial wherewithal to push through if it gets a little bit tough the first winter.
Yeah, we wouldn't be here if we didn't have the ability to do that, because we'd be putting ourself in a huge risk. I mean, I understand you guys, too, would with the building, but, yeah, if we couldn't sustain, we don't expect it to be booming on Day One. Like, that's not the plan. The plan is that there's going to be, you know, some growth. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think I have enough specifics about that to answer your question at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Louisiana?
Thank you. So, I will ask the big elephant in the room. Being in our ward, I'm sure you've heard that we've considered many options to go there, and we cannot and absolutely will not accept any kind of housing there. So, being said, I think that's a quick answer, and that's why we've had many proposals for that. So, if, and I think that would be a quick solution, if Phase One is not as profitable or successful as anticipated, is that on your horizon as a contingency option?
No, it's all being zoned commercial. So, I think we would have to come, my understanding is we'd have to come back and ask you to rezone it for us, which has been understood loud and clear from the beginning, that that is not what you'd like to do. So, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Mikhail?
Yeah, I had a quick question. Is this a brand-new venture for you, the three of you, the CoAction Corporation? Have you done any other, anything business-wise together before?
Yes, we have. Not within CoAction Corporation, so we're, yeah, different entities. So, right now, we invest in residential real estate together, along with have other property management ventures, yeah, business like that.
So you have, here's my concern.
Okay.
Is that you're going to buy the firehouse, and, I mean, we're talking about an old firehouse, you're going to have to rehab this. We're kind of talking about this concept, like, it's already, like, we just got to throw some floors down and kind of move forward from there. My concern is, kind of pivoting off of Alderman Budmats here, is that if you come into an issue within this firehouse, and you're putting all your capital into, you know, fixing the problem that may have arisen, or you realize this isn't exactly what we were looking for, and then we're stuck, and we're stuck with a half-built something that sits. So, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, so we have a construction budget. John is our construction budget, and there's actually a generous contingency built into the construction budget. So we're planning for something to go wrong, and for us to need to spend more money than we had expected in the beginning.
Right, and, I mean, we would want you to be just as successful for the city as well, so, that's just one of my concerns. And then you were saying that your timeframe from, let's say you close, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I think John might be able to speak to that better, or correct me if I'm incorrect, but my understanding was like six to eight months for Phase One.
Yes, depending on the start date. The, when we originally looked at just the building itself, now, in talking with Joellen and the group, the parking area needs to be developed on Day One. Obviously, it's weather-dependent. This is not the time to be doing asphalt, so we have to maybe see what happens with the market in terms of when that comes online. Construction pricing is very sketchy right now as well. So, the budget that I prepared is 30 days old. We hope that, you know, we're not going to be in for any more surprises, but I've been in the construction business for 35 years. The budget that I gave them is a real budget, and I've been through that building three times now. I feel very confident. I mean, it's built like a bomb shelter.
Okay.
Very well-built, obviously. We're going to embrace the history of the building and try to bring it into the new millennium. It's got some dated issues, but it's very charming, so. We know what we're in for. The elevator was something that we had thought to put off, whether that's in Phase One or Phase, it'll be identified, but obviously, if you don't have to access the second floor, we can maybe do the infrastructure and delay that. But most of the improvements will be done. They're going to know their financial situation before they open.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the council, while they're up at the podium? Thank you. I think it's been very helpful. Joellen, is there more guidance or requests and direction you'd like from us?
Yeah, again, I just thank you to the teams for presenting. This is an exciting project, and there are some details to work through. Our request to council is for direction to continue to negotiate with them, with the intention that we'll work on a development agreement. So a lot of you had questions related to timing and cost and the what-if scenarios, all of which could potentially be included as terms in the development agreement. So I took some pretty good notes. We'll have conversations with them about how that development agreement would be put together, and it's a package deal. You know, we're going to have to package that and progress that through the process at the same time that we're doing zoning and sale documents as well. So it's rather complex. We can come back to council with some updates if you'd like, but at this point, I think we're just looking for direction on whether this is a concept that we want to move forward on and continue to invest staff resources with.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, I think it's a wonderful concept. I'm interested and excited about the opportunities. Definitely would like to see the conversations move forward a little bit more meticulously in the details, but this is for the council to make that determination. Show a vote, show our hands, are those in favor of having staff continue the conversation on this development and possible opportunity? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, that'll conclude this first item, and we'll move on to the second, which is with Director Horn, and this is about our refuse automation initiative. Looking forward to the updates on this.
Thank you, Mayor. No presentation for me on this one. So, as the council, as the council will recall, we, or the City Council renewed a contract with Flood Brothers, who is our recycling contractor, for five years. As part of that proposal, they gave us a cost-per-month fee related to providing recycling containers for every resident in the community. A decision was made that we proceed with refuse automation, which is a variety of benefits, both to our employees and residents. The great critter complaint that you all get will hopefully go away in the near future, but this was an opportunity to really bring to you this item, make sure you understand what our process is moving forward, and kind of give you an opportunity for a no-go/no-go status on this. So, I'm just going to walk through a few of the key dates that are important to us meeting our timeline. With me today are Public Works Operations Superintendent Bill Suchekki, to answer any operational questions from the city side, as well as both Michael and Kevin Flood from Flood Brothers, who will be available for questions as the subject matter experts to some of the information I'm going to present tonight that's slightly different than information we presented in the past. Excuse me. The first key date that we have to focus on is April 1st. We've talked with the Vehicle Replacement Committee about the need to order our equipment that outfits our trucks. When we talked to the vendors about a month ago, they said that it's possible we would have our equipment and supplies by the end of April. Now they're talking about the end of June. So if we don't get it by the beginning of April, if we push it off till May, I have concerns about us being able to start it in the summer, based on some of our timelines. Just so you all know, that item is proposed to come to you on the May, excuse me, March 22nd City Council meeting agenda. I think I can recall, our budget number last year was $115,000. That cost has gone up about $5,000 to $7,000, just based on material costs and eight months of waiting. So, that program, or that, is important to get that done, so we can get that equipment here, test it out for about a month, train our drivers on the equipment to be able to be proficient on it when we actually go live. The go-live we're proposing is August 1st, which gives us about three and a half months of social media outreach program. We're going to use social media, the community sign, newsletters. We are going to do a direct mailing. I believe I put that in the packet. I've worked with Michael in getting that direct mailing done. We're going to do everything we can to get that information out there, and so those are the, oh, and the last, obviously, the last important date, is everything okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The last important date that we have is the week of July 25th through the 29th. In talking with Flood Brothers, they have a lot of experience in doing these transitional changeovers when vendors switch communities. What we are planning on doing, and Bill will correct me if I'm wrong, is each day, we're going to pick a section of the community, a garbage route, and those recycling containers will be dropped off that day. Your recycling container, when you bring it down, will be left at the curb. Our public works employees will follow Flood Brothers employees and be putting a sticker, as is seen on the example containers in the room, that covers up the recycling guidelines and says "trash only." One of our foremen's, our street foreman's, did a lot of research and was able to get, I think it'll cost like $3,500 to get stickers. It takes about 15 seconds to put one sticker on, so very efficient, really a quick deal, and we'll do each zone each day, each route each day of that week. That way, by August 1st, on a Monday, everybody starts anew. They bring each one of their containers down, one on each side of the driveway, and we're automated. So that's the goal. The one part of the presentation that I need to make you aware of is, in speaking with Kevin, Michael, and the rest of the Flood team, we determined that it was most prudent to deliver only 65-gallon containers at this time. It was very easy to convince me of that, because I have recently gone through, experienced two different communities that I'm very close to, one being the one I live in, the other one being the one I used to work at. The community I live in delivered 95 gallons to everybody, regardless of house size, regardless of resident age, regardless of anything, and they got hundreds and hundreds of complaints. The community I used to work in did the boutique-style government, where they let every resident pick everything about their container. I was seeing social media posts for two months after apologizing for the problems that resulted from that. What we found, and through the guidance of the Flood family, the Flood vendor, is 65-gallon containers for recycling is the industry standard. It is the container size that people currently use, and what we would propose is that we continue to use that size. What residents need to understand is, when it comes to your refuse, the garbage, the city picked up, anything that doesn't go in the container gets put at the curb. We're going to take it anyways. We've also been assured by Michael and Kevin that the same holds true with the recycling. If you have a cardboard box, or a bag full of cans, or whatever, that can't fit in the container, you can put it down next to it, they're going to take it. In the very rare event that you would need an extra container, after you've shown that you're continually doing that, then you will be able to contact Flood. It would be a cost to the resident specifically, and they will provide you another 65-gallon container. Obviously, because it's the industry standard, that's what they have supply and stock in. When it comes to our 35-gallon containers, I was reminded by Bill and his team that almost all of our seniors either already have a 35-gallon container, or they're using a 65 and receiving the backdoor service. So, that impact to... So, that impact to senior citizens that we originally talked about is really not going to be there, our concerns regarding the size of the toters. These things that we, we just talked about are really the driving factors as to why I've felt comfortable coming to you tonight and telling you that I think this is the wisest decision. In talking to Bill, when it comes to refuse, some people do like a larger cart. We are not opposed to building an inventory of that in the future, but right now, because of the costs of the containers that we're currently going to cover the costs of for the residents, we want to let that program flush itself out for a while before we start investing into larger-sized containers. So, I have, this presentation is kind of a two-part. That's really all I have regarding the operation side of it. Both Kevin and Michael and actually all three, Bill, are available to answer any questions you might have regarding that operation schedule plan for their refuse automation.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, and I'm sure any of you experts can answer it, is it just came to light in your presentation there, Director Horn, is obviously refuse being, both sides, I saw you said opposite sides of the driveway. A lot of our driveways, as we all know, are back-to-back, right to each other. We have a small strip of grass or something in between, but at the bottom at the apron, the driveways connect. So, I'm guessing it's because of how the automation's going, like the calipers, probably the wrong word, but the grips, the hooks, is that we just have to make sure they're spaced enough, because I can put my refuse on the left side, but my right side is at my neighbor's left-hand side. It's really just so the grabbers can grab it.
And I can, I-
Do you like the words, the grabbers? I'm sure there's a technical term, but-
Grabber words.
Grabber word, okay.
I, I actually can answer this one, because Flood Brothers gave us some wonderful promotional material and educational material that we're starting to post in our social media sites. And the rule, I believe, is three feet on either side. So, if you put it on one side of your driveway, you can put one off into the grass and then one right at your edge of your driveway, as long as there's three feet.
The grabbers.
There's a video out there where a woman's sitting on a park bench and it grabs the, so we don't want any, anything like that. So, yeah, three feet is a pretty safe, safe distance.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. I was smirking before, because I think the important thing is communication, right?
Sure.
There's some feedback that I heard from residents. The first one, in terms of communicating this change, I think the Fourth of July Parade with our garbage vehicles out there and a banner saying automation coming in whatever X date, right? Both sides, you'll be visible to a lot of our residents during that time.
Already done.
Maybe have the grabber or claw on there with some, some signs. But, the other thing is that we still provide in-house refuse pickup, and the important thing is that if it doesn't fit, it's still going to be picked up, because our staff do the job. And I did notice some residents lost sight of that. They jumped automatically from toter to now I can't throw anything else that doesn't fit in the toter away. So, just driving that home.
Yeah, Bill, Bill has made it very clear to me in every single conversation we've had, and the residents need to be reminded, there is no change in service. If you put it to the curb, we are going to take it.
Yeah.
So, and I, you know, I agree, and our guys are great, and if it's out there, they'll find a way to get it in a truck.
Perfect. Thank you. And it's Alderman McHale and Veniziano.
Just really quickly to clarify, you're going to deliver all the same-sized bins at first, and then if there is a senior that does not want this giant bin in their garage, they can eventually call to get that to the smaller size. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think eventually is the key, especially if they're currently using that-sized one. Chances are, we're providing a service, we would probably try to encourage them to take advantage of the backdoor service first.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of residents don't realize we have that. We plan on promoting that service as well, as a way to deter people from getting the smaller container. The reality is, but Flood has been great, but we did agree that there needs to be a little bit of a growing pain period, where people learn to deal with what they have. That's the problem I saw in Lincolnshire, is, you know, tons of people ordered a size they thought they wanted, and then realized they wanted a different size, and then the vendor spent the next two months placing special orders and running one. It just became, I, I know what it was like there, and it was, it was not, through no fault of the staff, but when you try to do too much, you sometimes end up paying for it.
It's a logistical nightmare.
Yeah, it really, yeah.
Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you. So, Rob, you kind of know where I'm going. Okay, so, in the newsletter, if we could, like, bullet point, senior information, so that, I don't think a lot of seniors, as you know, we've talked about, they don't know about the door, backdoor service, that this would be a great opportunity to get that information to them.
Sure.
Because I know for a fact, they're going to see these big toters and they are going to freak out, that we can't get these toters down to the curb. So, I think in the newsletter information out there, that it's bullet pointed, seniors, like, and then the information.
And, and-
Very specific to them.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt. And you're absolutely right, and we've talked as a team through this, and we're going to try to steer the right calls to Flood Brothers directly, but residents should always be comfortable to call Public Works. And we love getting those calls from our seniors and helping them through any process. So, any seniors out there listening, please call Public Works if you have any concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vesessi?
Okay, just a handful of questions. First one, I want to make sure that, let's say there is a senior or something, during the time that they, you know, and they're not doing the backdoor service ever, the bin is optional. They can still bring their garbage to the curb, the way that they've been bringing their garbage to the curb.
It is, but we strongly want to encourage them to use it.
We want to encourage it to get the benefits of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand that.
We're, I mean, the city's paying for the vendor to go through with the automated equipment, so we would try to encourage it, yes.
Okay. Second thing, the, the bins themselves, how do I say this? Residents should be putting their garbage in, whether it be plastic bags or some other type of bag, and then putting that bag into the container.
Yeah.
Not just having the bag, the bag, you know, the container just outside their backdoor.
Loose trash.
Loose trash in it all the time.
Yeah, the, the, the containers are containers for your refuse or refuse bags.
So, we need to make that clear.
So, when you fill your kitchen garbage bag, you should tie it and put it in your container. It's not a reci, a, a, a bin, if you will.
It seems like common sense, but you never know. People have outdoor parties, people have things like that, they just, okay, here it is, throw it all in here.
However, for your recycling container, it's the opposite, right?
Yes.
So, for your recycling container, don't put it in a bag. Put it in loose and clean, and yes, rinse out your ketchup container. I know it's hard, but, but you should do that, and rinse it out clean, and then put it in your recycling container. And again, the great, the great opportunity for us as a department going through this is the opportunity to present a lot of this information, kind of like a, I don't know how to explain it, but a, just a bunch of information regarding our, our operation all at once, to really educate people, because they will be paying attention to it right now. It won't just be white noise.
Okay. Next question is, back when we discussed this originally, I know there are residents that currently have two recycling bins. How are we handling it when they have two recycling bins? Will they still have two recycling bins?
Those people pay and want, or they're, so they own that, they own the second one. The city owns the first one, they own the second one, so they, they keep the two.
Did you guys all hear that? Should I repeat it again? The city, most of the residents who have two containers purchased their second container themselves. So, so that is their container. The city only owns one container, so-
That can remain a recycling container. Because I do, I, I actually have personal experience on that. I do have two of them. The original one had a green lid. The new one has a yellow lid, or the additional one that we bought has a yellow lid.
Then you certainly can use that.
So, the yellow lid one would just stay recycling.
Sure, sure.
If we know that's the day the stickers are coming out, probably try not to put it out there that day.
Well, we, we won't put a sticker on a yellow lid. Yellow, yellow means recycling. We're only putting a sticker on the green ones that, if you look at the top, there's a 35, and it, and it lists all the different recycling requirements. We, we're putting a sticker over that, so there's no confusion for residents.
So, green lid, green lids will be trash, yellow lids will be?
Recycling.
Recycling, okay.
Yes.
That's good.
Perfect.
Next thing is more in, in the weeds, you know, through reading through the packet and that, the, the cost of this to the city-
Yeah, I didn't get to that.
Is that phase two?
Yeah, that's phase two. Do you mind if I just go through real quick?
Talk about that first.
If there's any other questions, I'll go through with the second part. And again, I, I know the second part that we provided has little to nothing to do with refuse automation, except for the fact that during our conversations in the past, we have had requests for this information. So, our staff did a great job, Bill and Joellen and James Culpepper, did a great job at researching other communities' pricing structures. It wasn't as simple as we thought it would be, where you just plug in a number. They have different programs and plans and, and options, where you could do all these different things. But, what we ultimately found, and your attachment should show it pretty clear, is that generally with yard waste, the city is about third, third-highest amongst the, the communities The second scenario provides a little bit more of a option of a resident that uses, not overly uses, but just uses all the services. You know, maybe gets rid of one dryer and does one little bathroom remodel, and then uses yard waste. In that scenario, the city is fourth highest, or third-
Out of?
Least expensive out of seven. I believe there's six or seven, six. Yeah, so four of six. So, they're four of six. What, what Joellen and the team found is, no matter how many scenarios they ran, the more services a resident takes advantage of, the more savings a resident has in Rolling Meadows than in the other communities. So, it, it's one of those deals where if a resident just puts out their trash, doesn't do yard waste, has a landscaper, yeah, they're probably paying a higher rate. But if, but if a resident, you know, we, we assume 34 bags, so like one bag a week of yard waste, one contain, one white good, one electronic pickup, and, and I think there was another, oh, one, one small remodel project, then they're saving dramatically. And, and the item that we didn't put in there that I realized does have a cost factor to it, if you've ever sat on the phone with a, they don't have to call us. Anything they can get out to the curb, any time of day, it could be midnight, 5:00 in the morning, if they can drag a sofa, we're going to take it. Whereas, all the other services requires you to call first for a special pickup, and every time that call gets made, that's time out of that person's life that they have to do that. So, that's another cost. I really believe that, that average resident is paying less than, or at least less than, if not dramatically less than, most of the communities that we survey. So, and that's just my own opinion. We certainly can run different scenarios, but as you see in the research they did, there's these menu options that, and I think one community does their funding source differently, which throws it all out of whack, so we, we did the best we could to kind of line it up apples to apples. And that's really for your own information. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really for your own information to help you answer resident questions when they call and see an article about a community getting a cheaper refuse rate. It doesn't tell the whole story.
Thank you for sharing that. Alderman Vesessi, did you have?
Okay, on, on your chart, it says, when comparing the other areas, in the bulk items, remodeling debris?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I understand the abbreviation CY.
Calendar.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yard.
Yes.
Okay, because I always think, think that calendar year, I'm like, so it's a cubic yard.
Yes.
So, so in these other areas, you know, how we have the program during the spring through the fall, where you can put, you know, the four-foot bundles, branches and bushes and stuff like that out.
Yes.
We don't charge extra for that. These other places, would that fall into the bulk item debris?
No, that's in their yard waste program. Some of them have-
So, they have to, a lot of them, they have to sticker those?
Yeah.
Each bundle?
Yes.
Yep.
Holy crap.
Yeah, a lot of those stickers are very expensive, and that's why we, we were very conservative when we were talking about yard waste, just in saying one bag a week. We all know that there's way more than one bag a week.
Okay, and then, based on putting the automation in there, it says in there that there's a, I'm trying to talk into both the mic and-
It's okay, I don't mind if you don't look at it when you talk.
It says that, it says that there's a potential cost savings of $15,000 through, through efficiencies and things.
That's, is that from the previous memo?
Or was manpower related?
Yeah, there's, there's a variety of savings that we expect to realize. I, I can tell you, the biggest savings to me is not necessarily manpower, because the reality is, the guys are so efficient, especially with the front. We're saving a lot of time when we went from the rear loader to the front loader. This, that automated thing still takes three or four seconds to do this and go back, and, for a guy to just jump out, grab two bags, throw it in and jump, the time savings is not significant. It's the wear and tear on their body. It's for them lasting 15 years in the, in the refuse division as opposed to seven or eight. There's a huge savings there that, you know, Bill can speak to that much greater than I can, but he's been working here for almost 40 years and seeing what that does to a employee's body over time, and that's where I think we're going to see the real, it might not be actual, real, physical dollars that you can grab, but it's, it's savings overall in a variety of ways.
Like, like, like potentially workers' comp and various other?
Yeah, I don't exactly know how our IRMA is structured, but-
So, that's part of it. I'm just trying to reconcile the dollars, because on the other end of it, there is a, what did it say, $10 and something cents per year charge to the city?
That's the annual increase.
Yeah, that's the recycling container increase, and-
86 cents a month.
Right, that the city is currently, the city will be picking up, so anybody listening, it's not, not on you yet. So, that, I know our refuse fund is very tight, so I'm still trying to figure out how that's going to be offset when we're projecting to be under, under our fund limits in that fund.
And I think, you know, I, I will say that I think staff has heard this problem during previous meetings, and our expectation is that will be a serious discussion during our budget meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Director Horn. I was going to say, we will have a comprehensive conversation during our, our refuse fund in the summer months and leading up to September of next year.
Okay, because we had talked at one time about when it's implemented, there could be other things that happen, so. Okay, I'll wait till budget time. Thank you very much, sir.
There's nothing else?
Alderman O'Brien?
I had a similar thought to that, and I know, I'm glad you said that. It was a question I had, Mr. Mayor, for phase two. Just rough ballpark estimate, we're talking about almost a half a million dollars. Is that correct? If I looked at my numbers here, the 1032 per month for five years is roughly the 360K, and then the outfit in the trucks is about 120 with that little bit of increase, so just ballpark-wise. If we get a question, what's this cost? I think everybody's for it. I've never gotten a call in to, no, I want to keep my plastic bags. I like, where are the plastic totes, because of the raccoons? So, I'm all for this, just but ballpark roughly is-
It's 62,500 dollars a year, or 360,000 over the five-year period, plus, you're right, about 120,000 for equipment.
Yeah, it is a capex cost too, so it carries itself.
Right.
Alderman Sanica?
I'll get my second bite, I'll take it there first.
Alderman Sanica?
Thank you. I just also want to let the council know that we have a bond that's expiring after this year, which will release an additional amount of funds, if that's the concern at this point. I don't, I don't think that's an issue at this point for this discussion.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica, Alderman Vesessi.
Okay. My next, just one other question along this line, and I'm done. The, once we, I'm assuming that we start paying for- The, once we, I'm assuming that we start paying for the extra amount per bin, per household, when we get the bins? It's not something that's gonna wait, we're gonna have to pay those bills before next year's budgeting?
August first, we will start paying those, but we have budgeted sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. It will be less, was it seven months, eight months? Be less seven or eight months, because we won't have to pay for the months they weren't being used. So this first year will only be about a third of the sixty-two, that's probably about twenty-five thousand dollars will be paid out of this budget. Then, of course, we'll have to talk about next year's budget during the budget process.
I get that, it's just, my biggest fear is that we're gonna be, at some point, towards third quarter or fourth quarter, especially with inflation and everything, although most of our costs are protected, that we're gonna be having a conversation about a transfer to that fund, because we don't want to go below the fund balance. That's a non-starter in my book. Transfers into enterprise funds are a no-no when it comes to the auditors and stuff. And my concern is it affecting our ratings. Our previous financial director kept preaching that year after year. So, if it's not a no-no, then I don't care, but that's what I've heard.
Thank you Alderman Pesessi, Alderman Sanica.
I want to just clarify my previous comment, because it, maybe, maybe there was something that was lost in understanding that. So, at this point, for our fund balance, we have a bond that's expiring after this year, and we can direct funds from the bond that's expiring to this fund to continue to be within our fund parameters. At this point, there's no risk of us not being within those fund parameters. But I don't want, this is not a budget discussion here either, so I would like for us to move on to the next issue, and I don't think that it's very responsible for Alderman to have any inclination that we're not within our fund parameters for any of our funds, because that's, it's not true.
Then how come we got something when we passed the budget? I'll stop it now, but when we passed the budget that said we were not, not gonna, we were projecting not to be within it, it's in writing, in black and white.
And as I said, during the summer months when we begin our conversations with the budget and we're aligning it for the future year, there will be a comprehensive conversation about this refuse fund, and it will help, it's just, this evening is not the appropriate time to get into that. There was a component of the presentation that spoke about funding for our information using some examples based on analysis that staff performed, including Director Horn, but I assure you, this is not going to be an impact to the residents and their tax dollars in a significant scope by any capacity. So, if there are further questions on the toters or the actual update to our machines, we have staff here available for that.
Elsa?
We're set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now I think we'll pivot to our building codes and some updates with that. For this, we're going to actually have Elizabeth and Dan, you guys are gonna present this evening for us?
Please.
Thank you.
It's freezing.
Yes, like it's a cold trap coming right.
Good evening, Mayor Gallum, good evening, members of the council. Wonderful to see you all again. Yeah, I didn't think we'd be here quite yet, but you know, it's good to be back in the council chambers, good to see everybody's faces. So, tonight, we're gonna be talking a little bit about the building code update that we have been working on for multiple months at this point. We had previously come before the council to get some direction at a previous committee of the whole meeting with regards to the building code update, and here we are this evening to share with you the fruits of our labors. So a little bit about the update, we are updating from the two thousand nine International Code Council, code sets to the two thousand eighteen. Last time this was comprehensively, well, not comprehensively, the last time it was updated was around two thousand and ten. So it's been over ten years since our last updates. Technology has changed, materials have changed, you know, and the new code sets that we're updating will address those things. So the new technologies require these updated codes for us to be able to manage that kind of construction in a responsible manner in the city. The local amendments, when we started out, had over a hundred pages. They haven't been comprehensively updated for many, many years. A lot of the amendments were just moved forward with each progressive code update and attitude were modified as needed without anybody going back through and taking a look at, you know, what they actually said and what their relevance were. So, these are just, this is just the introductions to the local amendments. And if you take a look here, this is now the introduction, that same section, to the local amendments, which we have reduced by about half. We reduced the total number of code amendment pages from a hundred to about forty, and that includes eight code books, which the old, the two thousand nine ICC sets were with seven. There were a lot of redundant amendments, there were a lot of things that were covered in the code books that no longer needed to be a separate amendment, so we were able to go through, recognize those, modify, remove as required. Some of the amendments were also no longer relevant, the technologies weren't, weren't, you know, in place anymore, weren't used anymore, so we were able to remove those as well. As I noted, the codes that we're adopting are the two thousand eight Code Council, International Code Council set, which includes all of these books. In addition to the ICC codes, we'll also be adopting the two thousand seventeen National Electrical Code as part of this as well. There are certain codes that are required by other agencies. We are allowed to propose amendments to make them stricter than what the other agencies require, but we are not proposing them at those, at this time. The most common ones that we run into are the State Plumbing Code, the Accessibility Code, but we also are required to follow the National Fire Protection Agency Life Safety Code, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District Watershed Management Ordinance, and the State Elevator Safety and Regulation Act. So we are not proposing any amendments or changes to any of those, we're just going to follow them as laid out by the state. So, in order to talk a little bit about some of the bigger highlights, I'd like to present to you our building official, Dan Street. He joined our department in, on January thirty-first, and really took the bull by the horns on this one, so.
Thank you. Evening, nice to meet everybody for the first time, so, pleasure to be here.
My boy.
So, as Elizabeth said, we are proposing to go from the two thousand nine version I codes and the two thousand, currently the NEC, to the two thousand eighteen and the two thousand seventeen NEC. Codes are updated every three years, it's a three-year code cycle, whether the municipality chooses to adopt those codes or not, they're updated every three years. With any code change, for the most part, a lot of them are new definitions, new interpretations as they become available, a lot of new building science, and fortunately, a lot of times, there's a lot of injuries or deaths, so codes are updated with accordance of that. Because at the end of the day, what building codes are, they're safety issues, and they're here to enforce the public safety, as well as the residents and future residents of the town. So as we go forward, some of the, some of the highlights that we'll be looking at from the code books that we currently have in place and what we're proposing to go to, the biggest one and the first and foremost one is a new book that was created. It's the International Pool and Spa Book. In the previous books, we did not have any real definitions for swimming pools, believe it or not. And especially with today, we can go to Menards, we can go to Home Depot, and we can pretty much buy a thousand gallon swimming pool with a, and you've all seen them in the arts, you know, with a little portable, maybe some of you haven't, with a portable filter. The unfortunate thing is that a lot of the building codes did not have any rules or regulations to enforce these, because it's all kind of newer technology. You'll see a lot of these even blow-up spas, where Coleman has a little blow-up portable spa, you'll see the exercise spas, you'll see all the new types of door latches and locks. So, the old codes only had about three pages to address this, and with now the creation of a new book, we have about forty, fifty pages to address all the swimming pool and spa codes, not only commercial but residential. So, one of the bigger changes. Some other code highlights, we get into the fire pump rooms. A lot of our fire pump rooms that you'll see access doors to, they're only accessible from the outside. So this was a problem with the code, because they're not accessible from the interior of the codes. So the code addressed this. They said, within that, we need to have that door clearly marked for fire rescue personnel. We need to put heating elements, believe it or not, we, a lot of the codes never addressed heating elements for areas of the country such as us, so because they were not accessible from the inside, a lot of these sprinkler rooms were exploding because of frost. Also, they need to have emergency lighting. We get into there with the fire department, they go, whoop, well, we can't see. Some of the emergency lighting is only required for the means of egress, so they made some changes, say, let's get some emergency lighting in there. Technology, technology's always changing, so the biggest thing with some of the technology that we have now are smoke alarms. Some of you might have alarm systems that goes off on your phone to let you know, hey, there's a smoke alarm going off in the house. Nest, Google, we've all got wireless technology now, so in the older codes, wireless was never addressed, and in the newer codes going forward, they address that issue. Wall bracing. Some of the new building science has told us that we can make our homes stronger by not only reinforcing some of the plywood, maybe back in the olden days, you saw your house, on the corners of your house, you had strong plywood, and then on the middle, you would have foam insulation. That building science has told us that we can no longer get the insulation from the interior of the house, and we can make the outside of the house stronger. So they want you to reinforce the outside with plywood and get all your R-values now from the inside, so they have wall bracing requirements. Decks, believe it or not, oh, excuse me, that's the next one, span charts. So, a lot of the wood that we're now using for timber, like we go to the lumberyard at Menards, it's coming from trees that are, that are grown, farm trees, that are no longer here from Mother Nature, the trees are not that mature. So what we've discovered is that a lot of the trees do not have the structural strength that they used to in the past. So, a lot of the new span charts will address that, something that couldn't previously span, like fifteen foot one, can no longer span that. So they've addressed a lot of the span charts with farm timber. Decks, believe it or not, there's never been a section in the building code to address decks. So, the building code got tired of seeing everybody on the ten o'clock news for decks collapse, so they've created its own chapter now for building officials, contractors, homeowners, how to construct a deck. Footings, beams, attachments, how they can be constructed so that we have no vertical or horned tunnel shifting, so we no longer have deck collapsing. So, that'll probably be one of the bigger changes for our residents that do a lot of their own home construction or contractors. You'll no longer see these little footings or these little connectors, it's gonna be quite a, probably one of the bigger changes for us. Wind design, as Mother Nature changes, so does the building code. So, Mother Nature has told us that we've getting a little bit stronger wind speeds, so when we construct a roof here, whether it's trusses or, believe it or not, solar panels, was one of the bigger things, that we must construct the roof to withstand a hundred and fifteen miles per hour. A lot of people put up these solar panels back in the day, and they go, well, we never thought about it, acting like a sale. I've actually seen where a solar panel can actually uplift the edge of a house, because it doesn't, and in fact, act like a sale. So when now people submit plans, they must show us that the, not only the manufacturer, but all the attachments are designed for a hundred and fifty miles per hour. And then we get into some green technology. As we talked about just solar systems, hard to go anywhere these days without seeing a rooftop solar system in the neighborhood, so the code now has addressed those. Prior to that, there was nothing in the code to address it. We get into some shutdown systems. It's very difficult for a fire rescue personnel to be at a, to be at a fire and turn off the power to the house and realize, hey, it's still energized by the solar system. So there was no code language to tell the manufacturer or the fire department of how we have to shut that down. So now the code actually requires what they call a rapid shutdown system on every rooftop solar, so that when the fire department goes there, they hit that switch, and within ten seconds, it has to be de-energized. Also pathways on the roof. A fire department personnel can never get on the roof to access the actual pathway on a roof, for vending purposes, or maybe even for construction personnel. So now there's actually pathways so that are determined where solar panels can and can't go. Electric vehicles, another big thing in technology. Never, ten years ago, you know, electric vehicle was kind of a thing that you never had to address. So now in every new construction house, not only do you have to have an outlet in it, the garage, as you did only before, you only had to have one, you have to have one now dedicated in each bay for the service of an electric vehicle. Granted, when you have an electric car, it usually takes thirty or forty amps, you have to put in a special outlet, but every electric car can be charged by the single volt, a hundred and ten volt outlet that's in the house. So now they say, one shall be dedicated in each bay, so that you can charge your car if you have one. Tamper resistant receptacles. Since two thousand and eight, tamper resistant receptacles have been required in new construction. And what is a tamper resistant receptacle? It's so that a child cannot shock themselves in the outlet. They can take a screwdriver, stick it in the outlet, and they can't get shocked. You have to take two simultaneously, open up the circuit, and get shocked. So now there's new requirements. The intent of it in two thousand and eight was requirement in all residential houses for children, but we forgot, what about daycares? We kind of left that one out, it's because the intent was to protect children, so we go, oh, we forgot that section, so now in daycares, hotels, we've added that section for inspectors to take a look at. Arc fault protection, kind of goes hand in hand with tamper resistant. What is arc fault? So two wires, even if they're not touching, they can still arc. And when they're arcing, what are they doing? They're heating up and they can cause a fire. So, in residential construction now, most of your circuitry that you install, excuse me, it has to have an arc fault breaker, so that if it detects an arc in the circuit or in the device that's plugged in, it shuts off the power of that room for fire purposes. So new requirements are what are required in residential construction. And that's pretty much the highlights kind of going forward from the two thousand to two thousand eighteen. A lot of green technology, a lot of lumber, timber, a lot of climate change, but for the most part, you know, everything that's building safety to help protect the residents.
Thank you for the updates, the presentation. Any questions from the council on these updates, or their impacts?
I do.
Alderman Sanica?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I know that you had mentioned in your presentation that some of these would be quite different from what residents are used to. Are there any plans as far as outreach on any of these proposed changes?
That's a great question, thank you. We have been advertising the fact that we are going to be talking about this here tonight at our counter, so that all of our contractors and homeowners are aware of it. After this evening, it's our intention to bring this forward to council for consideration of full adoption at the two meetings in April. So between now and April, or not between now and when we take it live, which I think we're leaning towards July first at this time, we'll be advertising and leveraging as much as we can, the city sign, the newsletter, the Public Works social media page, so as much as we can leverage to get the word out there, this, we will. I think we'll find that our contractors will also be very thankful for this, because a lot of the towns in our area are all at the more updated codes, the fifteen or eighteen as opposed to the oh-nine, so I think this is a good change that people will be glad to see.
Could staff perhaps provide a one-sheet FAQ that we can provide to our residents directly, or maybe if this is a task that we can have for the newly created communications committee as well, that would, I think, be most helpful for us, because then we can reference that and give that to them.
That's certainly something we can look into.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Sanica. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Budmats, then O'Brien?
So, help me understand, as of July the first, this is gonna be your code if this is passed in April?
Yes.
So, how does that give people who've already been in the process of doing designs and their projects and already drawn plans up, how do we accommodate those people who've already done that? Are we gonna have them go back to the drawing board?
No, of course not. Anyone who is in process or submits a permit prior to the July first going live with the two thousand eighteen codes will be allowed to continue under the two thousand nine. They won't have to change their plans to update, especially if they've already been in process. We do have some permits that are going through the process right now, we're not gonna go back and make them required to adhere to the two thousand eighteen's.
It just seems really quick for a phase in, just saying. From a contractor's point of view, if I'm bidding work now, and I'm bidding it, and I don't even know that you're doing a code change, it seems very fast to come in that short of a time period. I've seen municipalities, especially in the elevator code, take longer for a phase in, and so, I would expect you guys to extend a lot of grace on this for a little bit of time, because otherwise you're gonna have, you're gonna have a lot of irritated people who've already built plans, and if they come in on July the fourth, they're gonna be pretty cranky.
Well, I certainly hope they won't come in on July fourth, we'll be closed. But yeah, of course, we will, we will work with our contractors, our businesses and our residents to make sure that the project is as best as possible. We don't want to overly inconvenience anyone, but the idea behind these codes is to make everybody safer and to adapt to the new technologies. So, if there's, if there's issues, if there's troubles, then certainly we will work with those people.
So Alderman Budmats, I appreciate you bringing that up. I was gonna hold this question till the end, because it's a selfish question, it's a personal question, but I'm sure others might have it. I'm sitting on a set of pl-? I'm sitting on a set of plans at home for Garage, and I haven't submitted them yet because I'm not ready, but the architecturals are drawn up, and they're based on previous codes that have been adopted. And so how would that impact me? Should I rush to submit them now to be in a green zone? Or can I expect to submit them when I'm ready, but then have a bunch of red line revisions to mirror the updated codes that we've adopted? How does it work?
I'm going to let Dan answer that.
Yeah, and you have to remember, even though we're adopting the codes, there's not huge dramatic changes from a general construction project such as yours. The spans wouldn't change, you know, the only thing that may change would be, like I said, the wind design. But in 99% of the time for a general residential project, there's not going to be a lot of dramatic changes with regards to that. And like I said, if we're right along the timeline of where things are being submitted, and things were designed right around that time, we're going to work with the residents and business owners, but there's not going to be huge dramatic changes with that regards.
Okay. And I don't imagine many people being in my situation. I'm sure there's commercial projects that are far more complex, that are in the process, and if we are going to take the adoption into consideration in a very expedited manner, that could impact some, and I hope we would be flexible. But I figure if I'm somebody that has a set of plans waiting, and I'm just not ready yet, there's got to be at least one more person, and I don't want to see them have to scramble or then have to jump through hoops after the fact, because they weren't aware of our city going through this adoption rate.
If I may also add, Mayor Gallo, we would generally encourage people to at least submit the application, get everything started. The way our codes are laid out, everything is valid for six months, as long as there's, you know, as long as there's process. So if you submit your application next month, then it's good for six months to go through the process, you get in under the 2009. Once the permit is issued, then it's to those plans that were approved under the 2009 codes, the permit's then good for six months, or, you know, for as long as we're seeing activity. If there's no activity within that six months timeframe, you can apply to the building department for an extension, whether that be for the review, or whether that be for the permit, we'll certainly work with you or with anyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for letting me keep that conversation going.
No, I'm good, thank you, sir. Yeah, I'm all set.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you for the updates, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So move us on to, what is this now? We're on the fourth item here with the water shut-off and delinquent payment discussion, which we had previously at the beginning of this year in January, and we're revisiting this now. And so for this, Director Horn, I think you're going to take it away for the start.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I just want to thank Elizabeth and Dan again. I know you've only seen it a little bit, but they've been working on this for a year and a half or more. And Dan, since coming on, has done an amazing job going through every single code amendment to make sure whether it's valid or not. I don't think you can appreciate how much work that is, so I really want to thank the team for that effort. Wow, clapping, that's awesome, good job. Anyways, so getting back to the matter at hand, water shut-off presentation that we did in January, talking about some of the issues, the policy that the council had established back a couple of years ago now, to assist residents through the COVID period, and help people through that time when people were losing their jobs and being laid off, and really struggling through that timeline. We presented a variety of information related to how that's impacted to the city to date. City council had asked us for some follow-up information. I was going to walk through that information, and then some of the high points, or highlight some of the points that the finance department staff made that I was not aware of. As I'm passing out kudos, I do have to give kudos to the finance department, did really an amazing job looking through. New data's easy to look through. Old data and old software and old Excel spreadsheets is not, and they did an amazing job helping me prepare this information for tonight. So the first question that was asked was the number of delinquent accounts total. Based on our total accounts, it looks like about 3% to 3.5% of all of our accounts are would be considered delinquent. And delinquency means that they're over 300, that's not true. Delinquent accounts mean they have a balance on their account that is unpaid. So 3.5%, as it says in the memo, there's 15 commercial accounts and 242 residential. Please understand, that number will never be exact, because the day I prepare it, someone will come in and pay their bills. So it's always a fluid number. The other question that was asked was to find out the number of delinquent accounts, commercial versus residential. Generally, these were averages, again, because we're having to use old data and new data together. Generally, commercial accounts, we end up with about 10 customers who are, who get what's called a, what do they call it here? It's a notice. Basically, it's a notice means that, a notice means it's your first warning for a shut-off. So we get about 10 of those a month for commercial properties. The one thing that's important to note, I did note it in there, but I didn't explain it very well, is commercial properties generally have a single pipe that comes, or a single pipe that comes into their building, and it splits off inside their building, fire, sprinkler, and domestic. Because of that, we don't shut off commercial buildings, because we can't turn off their fire protection. So we threaten to shut them off, but we don't shut them off because they're commercial properties. So, and then same question on residential. City pursues about 150 customers for late or non-payments per billing cycle, and of those, about half usually end up getting the final warning, basically. And then of those, about a half dozen or less, we actually have to shut off per month. That's historical, and is, I would say, is true today if we were doing it, so. And then the last one that I can really give you an answer on is the number of current delinquent accounts. You did see an attachment that I provided. There's about four or five pages. Those show all the delinquent accounts. The difference, a delinquent account is any account that owes money. There's a, an account is, the finance department used another term, but it basically means if you have $300 or more, you're on like a list of potential shut-off, if it's over $300 owed to the city. So there are two different lists, but based on what they're telling me, is upwards of 80% of the accounts that are currently delinquent are ones that were regularly delinquent before 2020. Staff was very adamant, these are, a lot of the customers are repeat customers. Some information, oh, the last question everyone that was asked at that meeting, at least the way I understood it, was, was there a way to decipher whether a resident was basically taking advantage of the system? And had a long conversation with our accounts person on this issue, and the reality is, if a resident asks for help, we give them whatever help that we have to give them. We don't ask them for any proof, you know, prove why you're, you know, you can't make your payment, you know, we don't ask for anything. If you need help, you ask our staff, and we, they implement the options they have available to them to help the resident. That's just how they do it. So we really wouldn't gather any information like that. Some key pieces of information that I grabbed out of the memo that I think are important is, from our finance staff specifically, is a good percentage of the repeat delinquent accounts do attempt to make payments on their accounts regularly, which is a good thing. So they are working on it, even though it shows as delinquent, they are making payments regularly. The higher percentage under that is accounts that have not paid anything at all since the council made this policy. So they have actually stopped making payments, period. I found it interesting that some of our repeat delinquent accounts have moved out of the community, which now means that that account is delinquent, and we can only recover those costs once a property sells, and we can get that money through real estate transfer stamp process. And the one that I found most interesting, I don't know how we stop this, is residents have actually moved into the city and are not paying a water bill, because they moved in. I don't know how that is happening, that's something, obviously, as a staff, we're going to look into and figure out how that works, but they've moved in, and because there's no repercussions for not paying their water bills, they're just not paying it, they haven't even set up an account for it, there's no motivation to do it. I'm assuming. I can't imagine that's a significant number, but they did say some residents have moved in, so that means more than one. So another point, if you read in the memo, our staff has indicated that only one resident has come in for help, and specifically noted they needed help because of a job loss. So I think that's a good thing, because that means a lot of our delinquent accounts are not people who are not employed, because as we've said, I think even in the previous meeting, you know, call us, we have programs to help you, which brings me to my last point I want to make. The city, our staff, our public work staff, did work in January. We went to, Ryan Rivard went to a Cook County webinar about ACITA program, community, what's it called? Community and Economic Development Association of Cook County. It's the ACITA program. It basically is specifically for people having trouble paying their utilities. It offers assistance for utility billing. It's a fund that comes right from Cook County, you apply for it. We would be a person who could administer and actually do the application process on behalf of the resident. That is a program that we investigated. I recall how, after talking to staff, we were waiting for our new city manager to start before we implemented that, make sure it was something we wanted to be involved in. We have since started implementing that. I think our finance director is filling out the proper applications and agreements that need to be in place for that process. So I think, and just to tie, put a bow on it, the city does have programs or opportunities to help residents pay their bills slowly over time. We don't shut off residents who are trying to pay their bills, and we do have other avenues to help maybe more than the city can help with actual real tangible dollars moving forward for those residents that might still truly be in need. So at that, I'll let the city manager speak.
If I could just add one point to add on to Director Horn's identification of the ACITA program. So the program itself is called the Illinois Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. It functions similar to LIHEAP, which is a program for home energy that's existed for many years. In summary, it provides a one-time 1,500, a customer can receive up to $1,500 in assistance to help pay for past due water bills, disconnection fees, or any late fees. And so the program is administered, it came through the ARPA funding that was provided through the county, and as the director mentioned, we are currently getting ourselves enrolled in that, so that our residents can partake and also participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Horn, thank you, Manager Sabo, for those updates. I think now it's time that we engage in the conversation and direction as to what this council would like to do. And so with this, Alderman Sanoyka.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I have three items that I kind of want to touch on, and not included in those three is thanking staff for looking into that ACITA funding, since ultimately, when we're looking at this, our goal here is to make sure that we're funding our water infrastructure. I know we're going to talk a lot about that in item five, so I don't want to spend too much time on this. But I do want to state that if that's the goal that we're doing here, I would like to see staff pursuing various options like they are with ACITA, to make sure that we have funds for the infrastructure, for the water infrastructure itself. That said, I also want to say that I just don't think it's helpful for us to really speculate as to why people are or aren't paying. If we don't know, and it sounds like we don't really have that data here, then it's just not helpful with this discussion. You know, once we ask these questions in January, we found out that we just have residents that aren't paying, it's possible that they just don't know, or aren't getting set up, or there's maybe some other issues there. So that's why I'm saying, I think, maybe focusing on speculation and motivation isn't really great for this discussion tonight. That said, I do want to focus on how staff intends to address this issue with commercial properties versus residential properties when we really can't shut off. So that doesn't even seem to be like a relevant question for a residential, I mean, for our commercial properties, and a significant percentage appears to be like one or two. And is there any tactic that we would want to discuss here that maybe is in the works for those specific, go ahead, Dr. Director Horn, yes.
We have a process in place, we have adjudication process, excuse me, for that. We have court process, and we pursue those as needed. The finance department comes up, and they have an adjudication day where they handle all their cases for delinquent bills. Really, I think a lot of this, and I certainly hope I didn't allude to anybody's position, but a lot of this has to do with, because everything's been put on pause, some of those processes that would make people aware of what we're just not doing, though. So we don't send someone a late notice if we're not going to collect a late fee, so they don't even know if they're late. They don't even know if they're, there's some of that possibility out there. So to your point, you know, it's possible people don't even know they're doing something wrong, or, you know. So that's why I think the biggest thing for staff at this point is to understand, you know, I left the original questions, I'll leave it up to the mayor to kind of guide through that, you know, as far as what we really need to know, but, you know, ultimately, we want to know, is the program something we want to go ahead and start incorporating again? And if so, what do we do with what's beyond due already? And do you want us to continue to go? In talking to the finance staff, I had mentioned that we had to see whether the council wanted to write off that, and she was like, what? Like, we've never done that. So it's not common to, you know, a lot of times, we might wait and not get, the account might not be made whole for 10 years when the property sells, but then at that time, when the real estate transfer goes through, we will then get payment for that delinquent water bill. So I just, those are the, really, the key things we need to understand, and then we can proceed with whatever you guys want.
Thank you, Director Horn, and I would agree with that as well. It's just, again, do we really want to wait 10 years in order to get, I think our largest account on here is over $50,000, and I would say, no, we don't want to wait those 10 years. So that's why I think, you know, having other options available to that effect would be helpful. If we have other residents that have left, and we don't have any possibility of recovering those funds until possibly 10, 15 years later when the property sells, then that's all that we can do. I don't see really any efficacy with the shut-offs that are associated with this, and so if we are shutting off a resident and they leave, or if we have residents that just aren't paying at all, and they leave, then we're still not recovering the funds. So the shut-offs may or may not be effective for very many residents, and so I want to ask if there's other opportunities that we can do here, and it might even just be sending a notice, not a shut-off notice, but a notice, if we have other residents who even, who haven't even started paying their water bills.
Yeah, you know, and we certainly will look into all that, and I think if you recall from the first memo we provided, the finance director requested two months, so we can do some of those notifications and give people an opportunity to understand what the council's course of direction was going to be, so we can kind of have time to do that. I will say that I know this from our own department, and I know the finances the same way. We send two notices, we make way more efforts. If a person is actually getting shut off, there's no reason, they know why they're getting shut off, because we have made multiple, multiple, multiple tries to try to get them to pay before we do that. I will also say that a lot of those kind of accounts, those residential accounts, it's not abnormal that, I know it sounds crazy, but, you know, if some of those, a lot of those accounts are like $1,300, $800, we will just collect that when the house sells. I know it's not the best solution, but it's the ironclad solution that doesn't get lost in the weeds, and if someone's already gone, it really, to me, doesn't make sense to waste staff time trying to pursue that, you know, it's kind of like dealing with property maintenance issues on a house that someone's moved away from, and we can't find the owner. It just doesn't justify the effort necessary, so. The $58,000 one, much, much different story, but, so.
So then, when a shut- So then, when a shut off is happening, then what is the, what is the return on that? Do we typically have then accounts? I know that you're not the finance department, so if you can answer this, then we can, we can certainly follow up with staff. But we're looking for what, is this, is this effective? Because it sounds like, from what you're stating, that the ironclad solution is there's a shut off and then the resident leaves and then we recover those funds at some point in the future when the home sells.
Yeah, but those, I, I would say that most of the shut offs we go to are not of residents that are leaving. Most of the shut offs we go to, we shut off and then someone runs to the city hall in a panic by four o'clock to pay their bill. And then we call a guy back in to turn the water back on. And that, and that is one of those revenue streams that kind of goes with all the other fees that we've put on pause is a, there's penalty fees with that. If, if, if you don't pay your bill, we've sent you multiple notices, you don't pay your bill and we have to go shut it off, you pay to shut it off and you pay for us to turn it on. I don't know what the exact dollar amounts, but I know there's a penalty fee for both of those activities. So that's a revenue source as well. I think most of the people we go out and shut off are living in the house. They're not moving away, most of them. It happens a little bit, but I don't think it's the high, high percentage that I, I think you're concerned about.
So I, and I would say, I would finish my comments and questioning at this point with, it sounds like we might need more data in order to be able to determine if a shut off is effective. So it sounds like any data before 2019 is not easily obtained because we have older systems and software. But if we do have that data back when we did enforce shut offs, I would like to know how, what the efficacy of those shut offs were. Or if we typically had residents that would leave because they weren't able to pay their, their water bill and then the city wasn't able to recover those funds until we had a real estate transfer stamp.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Director Horn and staff, thanks for all this data. I actually feel comfortable with this. I understand Alderman Sanoyka's points on that. The way that I'm viewing this, and it hasn't changed from my, my first hand when we talked about this in January, and I didn't receive calls on this like we have on many other items, the way I'm viewing this, and again, using the rough numbers that are here, we've been floating about a half a million dollars to 257 entities, the 242 residents and 15 commercial. We just finished, and I know we're not going budget topic tonight, but we just talked about refusals and that's going to cost and we're going to talk about stuff on. My concern is here, like I said back in January, I think the numbers are clear here. It's 3.7%, but we're tying up about a half a million dollars in funds from other things the city could be doing. So I'm comfortable, as I said in January, reinstating education, letting them know payment plans are available, but not doing any late fees. I am 100% comfortable writing off late fees or penalties, but I'd like to start collecting some of this revenue, even if it's twenty-five dollars a month, whatever the resident can set up with staff, because Director Horn's made it very clear, staff will work with the residents. I'd like to see us move forward on this to at least get the ball rolling, maybe no water turn offs for six months. I can understand Alderman Sanoyka's point as we say, hey, we're going to give you time till the end of the year, get in, get your stuff in order, we won't shut it off, but, and we're waiving late penalties. I'm okay waiving that, but I think we've got to get back out there because we're tying up a half a million dollars for 242 entities.
So I, I agree with your sentiment on this. For me, I think the most enlightening aspect was the, the percent of current delinquent accounts that are repeat, right? If, if you want to consider grouping them in a repeat, knowing that 80% of them are repeat offenders to being delinquent in their payments. I know that in my mind, when we initially implemented this, it was in an effort to help families or businesses that were being negatively impacted by the COVID pandemic that was occurring. But if, if we're starting to understand that a majority of those who are following the trend of delinquent in their payments are the same as they were pre-pandemic, then I think it wasn't, it wasn't executed and, and used in the spirit in which I thought this policy would have been used. So I would, I would echo Alderman O'Brien in putting this back in play. Alderman Budmans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So seeing that, it would seem to me that it's really difficult to occupy a home without water. I think we should remove occupancy permits from businesses who haven't paid their water bill. I understand we can't turn off their water for fire protection reasons, but if a homeowner wouldn't be able to occupy their house without water, then the business shouldn't be able to occupy the property without water either, or without paying for the water that they're utilizing, especially in the case of some business that owes us fifty thousand dollars. So I'm not, I'm not beyond using that as a tool because you wouldn't be able to occupy the house with no water.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I think clarity and the council, how we proceed with, which I feel like I'm getting right now, will have a great effect on the number of delinquent accounts coming back to a more reasonable percentage of what we're more used to pre-COVID. I think that will have a, a great impact, plus our ability to communicate with residents through notifications and letters and helping set, set up programs to allow them to pay over time. I think we're going to be in a much better place by the end of the year with some of your guidance.
Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you. So the other, the other option that I was thinking of is that if it's a business, then they cannot renew their business license. And then if they are a repeat offender with their business, then maybe they have to set up a, like a pre, like a deposit in order to get their business license if they're a repeat defender or offender, defender, that's late. And, and I'm, I'm going to agree with my fellow council members here. You know, we're kind of getting back to our new norm here and it's time that we reinstate, you know, our shut off policies. And, and I, I even agree, you know, anything new for late notices would have a late fee. Anything for past, we've waived that at this point, but any, you know, when we set a date, anything new, this is our, we're going back to our old policy and set that date so residents know. It's a stream of revenue that we need as a city so that taxpayers don't have to, those of us that pay our bill on a timely manner so that we don't have to eat costs for other things and those that don't wish to pay their bills on time need to pay the consequences. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman Bessesi?
Yeah, in looking at this list, I just want to make sure I got everything straight. Delinquent is if there's a balance. And what you said is the majority of those ones, those 250, whatever, it's like they're, you know, one to 30 days late or 30 to 60 days late. You know, I noticed that the 90 day late is like a whole bunch of zeros. So people are still paying their bills, they're just behind in, in catching up. So it would be my, I would agree with Alderman Veneziano and so my, my peers here that we do need to reinstate our, our policies. And I think the communication should go out when we do that and we set a date that the city, you know, just make it very, very clear, the city is willing to work with you. If you're making your payments, if you could, you know, we'll work with you to get you whole, you know, whole again. I, I know the city manager mentioned that, I'm guessing it's imminent, you're signing, we're signing up for something with ACITA?
Yes, yeah. To create that program.
How long do you think that's going to take?
We should have that all complete and submitted by this week. It should be, it's a fairly quick process.
It's coming really quick. So there's going to be even more options for our residents. I think it really ties, I think Alderman Veneziano, it's communication, just getting it out there. Because I believe that the vast majority of the people that are, are delinquent, they're still making their, they're still paying every, every month, they're paying something, they're just behind. So if there's programs to help them, whether it be ACITA or whatever, or hey, pay an extra 50 bucks a month or something like that, just till you're caught up, then I think the, the contingency on the shut off is if you've made absolutely no attempt to contact the city, even though you've been contacted, that, that kind of shows your intent. You're not, you're not making any effort to try and resolve your situation. So I know you've got questions here that you want to get into, so I'll.
That's okay. Alderman Sanoyka has her hand up for now.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things, I would not be in favor of reinstalling late fees at this time for a number of reasons. The first being that we're still working with Tyler Technologies and our module to make sure that electronic payments work for individuals. And there are still some issues with that technology. And I would probably want to make it easier on staff to just waive that process at this time as individuals continue to adopt that new technology. I have received calls from residents regarding that and that they have to call the office to get that situated. And that's not always something that they can get done 24/7. It's when they have time during regular business hours. So I would not be in favor for that reason. And for this item that we have here in front of us, I also would want to, it sounds like we're going through an adjudication process with that one business, but in businesses in general, it's the same situation where if the business leaves, then we're still stuck with waiting until there's a real estate transfer stamp for that commercial space. And that can take a long time as well. So I would still want us to have a pro-business attitude when we're working with them and see if we can maintain a, a different avenue as opposed to, I suppose, all stick and taking items away and trying to, unless we have to go through adjudication like we are with the single item, or the single participant. Do we know if they're still in business now or is this, are they active?
I didn't want to comment. I, I think I was clear to keep the names of the business off. It may be a commercial, it may be listed as a commercial account, but maybe a large residential complex.
I understand.
So that's why, that's why it might be high because it may be like the, the fees of 50 different units or 70 different units in a large residential complex. So that's why it might be a big number. I, I would not want to.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Any other comments or questions, Alderman Budmans?
Yeah, second bite. So I guess the point is, is that if there's a large concern and if we've suspended late fees, those late fees though should not be suspended when we're, our only method of recapturing the money is, is at the time of a real estate closing. So I'm assuming that once you've been out that far, that we're able to, if we're going to a real estate closing to get our money or waiting for transfer stamps, if we're, if we're only doing that and we're only asking what we are owed and without penalty, something's wrong with the system.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to speak to that. I think the, someone from the finance staff who follows those, those through the adjudication process would need to comment. My expectation as we seek, we don't, I don't want to say this, we work within the confines of what we're required to do through the policies and codes that you guys establish. We try to work with residents within those guidelines best we can. When we go to an adjudication process, we have to ask for it as it's written in the code. So if, if the code specifically states a penalty fee is required, you know, every 30 days, that's what we ask for. An adjudicator can say no, but we ask for what the code dictates. So we don't use a lot of judgment in those instances. We follow what the code states specifically. So, and I, I really, I appreciate all the conversation regarding the shut offs and, and all really good conversation. I just want to make sure the council's aware, there's a high percentage of people we threaten with shut off, there's not a high percentage of people we shut off or that stay shut off. So when we're, I'm talking about maybe at the end of the year, three or four in a whole year. So the, the shut off threat is used every single month on a high, on a high percentage of, of properties. But the actual ones we actually shut off and leave shut off is very, very few. So I just want to make sure.
Well, now you're showing our hand. Rob, we have toters to pay for.
Exactly. We just fill those things up with water and.
You know, Alderman Bessesi, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, we do have toters to pay for. But to your, to your point, you know, the, the threat of it, they, the ones that get shut off are the ones that ignore that. The ones that don't ignore that and actually come and try and make a plan, then they're, then they're usually in, okay, as long as they're following the plan that was made.
It's, it's a, it's a, I, I would have to agree with Alderman Sanoyka on this. Most of the residents we deal with who miss a payment, who are late on a payment, who get their water shut off, it's good and it's, it's an accident. I forgot, I didn't notice, I was, the big one is people were out of town when the notices came in, or they were helping an elderly family member. I don't want to paint all of our delinquent accounts as irresponsible homeowners or property owners.
No, and I'm not trying to do that either.
That's why I want to make it clear that that percentage of the people we deal with is very small. There are, however, a high percentage of people that understand what we're doing and are, I don't want to say taking advantage in a negative way, but they're taking advantage of the opportunity presented to them. So that is happening.
And that, to my original point, asking that question, I know we, staff, don't speculate whether or not somebody is using the system, but if, staff are closer to the temperature of how residents are utilizing these services or these leniencies that we're applying to services in order to help inform the council so we can make a determination as to whether or not, we did this with good intentions as a council to try and afford benefits to residents who may be enduring hardship during a pandemic and it turned out that it was useful, or it turned out that people took advantage of it, or, or we, we perceive it as being taken advantage of. And so what, what we needed to know is if we, if you feel, if staff feels that this was effective and it should continue to stay effective, or if, if the council does need to evaluate reinstituting the policies as they used to be, or if the council needs to reevaluate the policies and have a new normal for our policies when it comes to water and, and what our tolerances are for, for delinquent payments and what our process is to respond to those delinquencies. So if there aren't any other questions, if there are, I'm happy to open the floor or keep it open.
I just had one other comment. I want to support what Alderman Sanoyka said regarding the, not taking any action as far as, as far as this until we can get the payment processes all worked out for that electronic payment. Because I do know from my number one constituent, my wife, that she has been frustrated as hell trying to pay the water bill sometimes and just doing a, you know, an electronic payment from our bank and it not working. So people who are working, working full time and all that, it is very difficult to get in to talk to somebody during our working hours. So I would like to see that issue resolved before we actually decide to reinstate anything. Because that was a very good point that she made.
Okay. And then Alderman Veneziano, then O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I appreciate that and I think all of our residents do. We've all kind of had a struggle, especially those first couple of months. But I'm going to challenge you on this question. We all have mortgage payments. We all pay them electronically for the most part. And if it doesn't work and it doesn't go through, you will make time to make sure you make your mortgage payment somehow, some way. So I challenge you in the fact that what is any different from making your mortgage payment or your credit card to your water bill? You find time to call and make your payment if you're having trouble online. So why, as a city, should we take those fees and not be able to retain some of our fees to offset other costs, just like mortgage companies, credit card companies, brokers, lenders, all of those kind of things? I just challenge you in that, that if there's a will, there's a way. You've got to make the time if our system isn't working properly.
I couldn't get it to work either. I dropped the check in the front of the box, no.
There's ways. There's absolutely ways. So we, as a city, shouldn't be eating the cost or not getting these fees because technology isn't always user-friendly. That's just the way of the world. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
I was just going to ask to clarify. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that by any means. We want to have the tools working and those other avenues, but we're, Alderman, Alderman Sanoyka, I guess it's more for you because I know Alderman Bessesi agrees with you and I'm not opposed. Are you talking about re, not reinstating the late fees until we know Tyler's working 100%? Or are you talking about not reinstating payments at all? I was taken as not doing late fees until Tyler was up. Is that what you, was that what you were recommending? Is that we still start the collection again, we just don't have late fees? That was my understanding.
May I clarify, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yes, I, I would say that it sounds like staff in answering these questions from January uncovered additional issues which they presented here tonight. So, and some of those are, some people just may not even know that they should be paying their water bill. And if that's where we are, then that's not, then the discussion is not about shut offs. The discussion is about. The discussion is about making sure all of the residential and commercial households have an account with the city. So that's just an operations issue. And so I'm stating, I'm saying, I don't think there should be any policy change at this point until we have our operation questions completely answered and staff understands why we don't have accounts for every single owner, right? And as a part of that, I'm hoping that we can continue to ensure that we start having all of our delinquent accounts paid up. And part of that is going to be outreach from, from staff, I would imagine, and any other strategies that, that staff comes up with in order to start paying down that balance. Some of it's adjudication, like with our number one account on here, delinquent account on here. And I would state that while we're doing that, I would hope staff would come back and then we can discuss if we want to implement late fees going forward. At this point, I would say it doesn't make sense to include late fees.
I was, I disagree on that part. I'm not assessing late fees, but I do think, I mean, there's multiple ways to pay. It's 3.7%. So that means 97% of people are finding a way to pay their water bill. But I am in complete agreement, waive late fees or any things like that, the penalty fees, I guess. And I'd even be happy going through the end of the year if it's going to take staff four months to review because those are very valid questions that came to light tonight. But I think we've got to start collecting water payments and late fees, I'm comfortable delaying, but I think we've got to start getting payments and for 97% of the other people are figuring out.
So to, to this point, this conversation arose because one, timing back in January, but two, it was brought to the council's attention that because we had established this freeze, staff was no longer tracking or monitoring the inbound payments of our water utility. And, and that's a critical component that, that we need to keep eyes on, which I believe we have staff now monitoring and staying on top of it. So to that point though, I think it's important that we reinstitute collection of, of, of water bills and tardy.
Agreed, yes.
But we, we should waive late fees. And so I think the council, we, we should take some votes on that. And so I don't know if it answers the full question about reinstituting the city's original policies, or if this is a hybrid amalgam of, of a new age for this at the time that we're discussing it now.
Sure. I, I have a few questions, but as you guys answer the basic questions, if I have follow-up ones, I'll, I'll just clarify those after.
So a quick show of hands for all the council members who believe we should reinstitute our policies on collecting water, waiving late fees.
And delinquencies.
And delinquencies.
Any penalties, things like that.
Anything that's detrimental to the resident or the business owner in terms of trying to play catch up.
Until a further date that we'll talk about again.
We'll have to, we'll have to get more data. We'll have to have a closer view from staff on the process and how it's going and then we can revisit this. I didn't have to count, it's, it was unanimous. Thank you.
May I ask a question just for clarity?
Yeah.
So as far as the data that's sought, is it just affirmation to the council at a future date that the online bill pay system is working as it's been set up and intended to run?
Yeah. First step is confirmation that our system is working in the manner it's supposed to. And then from that system, being able to understand who's, who's outstanding what amounts? Is that what we're looking for? Alderman Sanoyka, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I.
Yes. So the calls that I have received and it sounds like Mrs. Bessesi has also received is that utilizing that system, for some reason, there are certain failures. And so I think the council will need to know what some of it, maybe our tech tickets are outstanding as to why that's not working or if the finance department has any calls from individuals. And then basically to just kind of clean up the bugs with the system.
And so for staffs, from staff's perspective, what other questions do you need answers to from the council for direction?
Yeah, I, I think the only thing, as I recall, the only question I believe I had, you had talked about, I, I know we want to come back related, well, a couple of things. The first thing is clarification. Anyone delinquent currently for whatever fees, with the exception of penalty or late fees, we are not waiving those slates clean. We are collecting those at some point in the future.
Yes.
Okay. That, that's good. The other thing is the reinstituting of penalty fees. Is that, do we want to wait for that information or is that something we could say, we're going to reinstitute those on like, say, January 1st? Or I only ask because it would be probably helpful for how we provide residents information in the future and would likely encourage people to want to pay sooner if they knew there's a date out there that a penalty fee may be implemented. And I don't expect the problems, any, any problems that you're hearing about from the ERP are going to be long lasting or things that can't be fixed relatively quickly. The utility billing component of ERP is one of the parts of the system that seemed to be working well. I don't use it as much as you residents, but that, that's the only kind of follow-up I was going to have is is there a date out in the future you're thinking about?
So for, for reinstituting the penalties, at this point, I mean, I'm sure the council, we can come up with something, but the reality is it would be a superficial and albeit arbitrary date. It's a good horizon in terms of communication points. So you can communicate to the individual or the business owner that by this date, if you're not square, you will start receiving a penalty of X percent or what have you. But it would be a very superficial date on our part. So I think we would have to, I mean, what, what would it take from a staff's perspective in terms of resource hours and being able to ramp up to, to having the diligence to stay on top of those late fees and penalties? Is that, is there some cost to staff time for any of this that we have to?
Not, not that I can imagine. It's, it's part of the regular billing process within, within our finance department. So resumption, essentially whichever direction the council ultimately chooses to go in, we can resume the, the billing and, and late penalty billing process. We've just held on that for now.
And, and we can use in our, our information kind of a vague, it, it does help though to have that to say, you know, it is our understanding that council's going to consider penalty fee, reinstating penalty fees after the first of the year. That, that's not definitive, but it gives some guidance. So I, that's all I was looking for. And if you don't have that right now, we're okay. I just was trying to avoid bringing this back again.
No, I, I get it and I understand. We, it's, it helps to have dates and it helps so we can, we know we're tracking in the right direction. And I'm happy to throw out some, some dates and have the council agree. I just, I don't know if there's any value to the date other than for the sake of communicating to residents that this is, this is your deadline and it's used as, and I don't want to use the word threat, but it's an indicator of when they can start seeing penalties if they don't catch up.
Yeah. And that was my only intent. So if the council doesn't feel comfortable, I'm fine with that.
I don't want to make that decision for the council, but Alderman Sanoyka has something to say and then we can throw out dates if you think there's a good benchmark date, then we'll use it.
And, and the reason that I didn't want to put a date out here is because if some of those issues that we've identified with the ERP system require a longer time. So if I were to say maybe, you know, if this is, can be cleared up in six months, add another three months for any delays into that. So that would be your January 1st date. But this wouldn't include those that are on payment plans. Is that correct? Cause we're just working on getting the payments for those that are on payment plans.
Yeah. My expectation is if somebody's worked on a payment plan, then we're not issuing late fees unless they're missing their payments, you know, that they've set up. I, I guess, you know, if I agree to pay $50 a month and I don't pay one month, then yeah, that, that I think would incur a penalty for.
So that's the kind of discussion I feel like we would need to, to talk about because I don't think we're in agreement as a council to that. Because if we have somebody who's already struggling to pay and they're on a payment plan and they've discussed this with the city, then they're struggling to make payments. And so we want to ultimately get, get that back. And if there's a penalty on top of that and they're already struggling, it just seems counterintuitive to getting what we need. So if that's the policy that we have, that would be something to probably change in the future. So I would say we can probably, you know, work on that January 1st date that you requested to give staff enough time to work with the ERP, to work with our data and then also to communicate with residents that this is coming and then see where we're at, much closer to that date. And if we have to adjust and come back, then we do.
And I think that would be a great idea too, because that would then hopefully we'll have a new finance director permanent and that will give them a great opportunity to bring that to the council before, before January 1st to kind of talk about where we are with some of those things. And yeah, it's not my desire that we start penalizing a bunch of people who are especially struggling, but the date will help us, I think, get some of those accounts made whole.
Yeah. And then I think we, we can take a show of hands for a, a January 1st, just so that way it's a communication tool in, in the process for residents from the accounting department and to enable folks to get back on track and at least have some sort of bookend to, to where they could be. And we can always be flexible as time moves on if we need to be. But Alderman Beniziano and then O'Brien, you had your hands up?
So I was, before you said January, so my proposal was going to be September. So remember, like with collecting absolutely no late fees, we are collecting none of these fees that finance has like laid out for us here. And some of the people that we have delinquent now, they may get caught up, but there's going to be new people. We've now had this cow meeting. They know that there's a flaw in our system that could take advantage of the flaw and will not be penalized with any late fees. So my proposal is going to be September 1st. We could then have three months of collecting some late fees. And that would be for people that have no payment plan, have made no contact with the city to do anything and any new late delinquent counts starting September 1st. That gives the city six months to work out any kinks with Tyler as well.
Okay. Let's, let's contemplate that, Alderman O'Brien, then we'll circle back to it.
Maybe, because we're sitting, I was going to say October 1st. It gets us, that's fourth quarter. And then we put in there, hey, starting January 1st, you're gonna, I mean, we're like, that gives plenty of time. I was just going to go off a quarter basis because that's how my mind worked. I was thinking October 1st. Cause that's fourth quarter went back to where we intend to be.
Alderman Budmans?
Do we put this on the September cow? And then we'll just, we'll, at that point, we'll find out if our collection agent, our collection actions have been successful or not. And then we can make a decision based on real-time data and move forward at that point.
If it's okay, if, if you're pushing it out to a cow, I'm just thinking as a person preparing the information, it may be better for the August cow, which will be middle of the month. That way, if you guys wanted a September date, we could implement it. So I, I would, that would be fine with me, but city manager will make that decision.
Yeah, that, that should be sufficient. I can tell you right now that, you know, we'll be getting on top of the Tyler payment issue immediately. So now that that's been put on the table, we'll, we'll try to expedite that, correcting whatever issues may exist.
Okay. So then at this point in time, we're, we're going to push this off to the August meeting and not take any, I know there's no official action in the committee at all anyway, but we're just going to push this off to the August, mid-August meeting before we make definitive action or are we reinstituting our policies by straw vote here to bring it back before the council at an upcoming city council meeting? Cause that's where it ultimately has to go back to, right?
And that was my intent. That was what I was thinking on too, is that we had, I think it was unanimous that we have to start going back to what we were at. And the discussion was when we start incurring late penalties. So I'd like to see it at, I know it's probably not next week's council meeting, but maybe the April one where we start collecting payment for these again. So that's what, that was what I thought was, is we had unanimous decision to move forward on that. The discussion for later in the year was when we were going to start putting in penalties and this could be the incentive, hey, coming fourth quarter type thing, the city may institute penalties, but we want you to start paying by June 1st.
Yeah. Because it was a unanimous show of hands that we're reinstituting our policies. We're just not implementing any penalties or late fees. So the, the component that will come back in August are the discussion about late fees and penalties. And staff can use that October 1st, end of September date, you know, just.
And the occupancy or the business license, non-renewal, that type of stuff. I thought those were great ideas for Alderman Beniziano and Alderman Budmans, but that's the, but we want to start collecting again in June if we can.
Yes. So that means that we have to come before the city council at upcoming meetings about reinstituting this, this policy of collecting payment.
So, so two things about that and you might, the city attorney might need to speak on this. I don't recall that we took an action to approve this under resolution. It was direction given at a meeting. It really wasn't a resolution. So I, you know, unless the city attorney tells me otherwise, I don't think we have to do that, go to city council to reinstate a policy decision?
Correct.
That's good.
The council would act the way they did. So if there was no official action via city council approval and it was just a consensus, the consensus can be provided to staff in order to effectuate whatever policy wants to, you know, currently to be implemented.
So that's, it's effective essentially now after the straw vote, then going forward, no upcoming council action?
And then per the finance director's request, we would ask to begin reinstituting per your direction with no penalty fees, no late fees, beginning in two months. So April 1st, June 1st, we would start that process. So I think we, I can tell you for sure, staff has direction.
Alderman Bessesi?
No, I'm confused. You confused me. Not hard to do. So we're reinstituting our policies as of now with our straw vote. So what's in two months?
We're going to start collecting money again.
That's the time it takes staff to ramp up here.
Oh, it's going to take two months for them to ramp up.
We, we need to implement everything and make sure that we notify residents that this is coming and we need about two months. That was a request of the finance director in the previous memo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn. Thank you and all those in the finance who helped bring this information here so we could move forward with this discussion. That brings us to our next item here. If my computer will catch up with me. And this is, still with you, Director Horn, and this is the.
Yeah, I'm very sorry for this, everybody.
Water infrastructure and the ARPA funding?
Yeah. I'm, I will try and go as fast as I can.
We got all night. We got all night.
Be careful what you ask for. So, so again, we've had a lot of conversations about ARPA funds. There's a lot behind this. I kept it short and specific to what we're talking about tonight. I tried to give you a little brief, brief background about how we got here. It's amazing. It's been seven years and a lot has happened. So I'm going to try and walk us through that. The city has, oh no, that's the PDF. It's not the PowerPoint version. So I apologize. All my, all my examples are not going to like, there's going to be no animations. Sorry. So this was to show you, there's three different layers. Basically the city has over a hundred miles of water main that we are responsible for. The city owns. Included in that are a lot of other assets related to our water system. The city, you may or may not know this, the city has four different water pumping stations. They have four different deep wells, which are redundancy systems for if we were, if Jawa was to lose water, we could provide water to our residents primarily for fire protection, but it is water quality, drinking quality water. So it could be used for all the different household items. We also have six different elevated and underground water storage tanks to make sure we have the right capacity for our system. All these components of our water system cost a lot of money. And just doing simple math, two miles of water main cost about, or, excuse me, one mile of water main costs about $2 million. So just in pipe, you have over $200 million in assets that the city owns. These are assets and therefore they're things we have to maintain and we're responsible Water main, water main life expectancy. So regardless of the type of material, for the most part, water main that is, or piping that's used for water main generally had a life expectancy of 50 years for planning purposes. Finding out now that the general life expectancy is closer to 70, but at 70, it's generally at failure. So it's not lasting at all. You will notice that 75% of the city's system was built before 1980, before 1990, excuse me, 1980s or earlier. Water main breaks are a good reflection of the condition of your system. This is a graph that was provided by, I believe it's in your, in your packet, provided by Baxter and Woodman in preparation for this meeting. We basically just took our historical water main breaks from 2012. These are water main breaks. So we have about 40 to 60 breaks a year, but those include water services up to the B-Box. These are specifically on the water main. You'll notice the dotted line is a trend line. So it is increasing over time. So as, it, it's just natural that as the pipe gets older, the ground, the acidity in the ground starts to eat away at that pipe, it begins to deteriorate over time. So that is a natural thing that we would expect. So that is a natural thing that we would expect. Excuse me, I'm gonna go back one. The red line is a trend line. The American Water Works Association establishes a trend line of what you would expect for a number of breaks in 100 miles. So we're right at that right now. But again, as the years proceed, we expect that that number's gonna go higher. I bring up water main breaks because it's a great planning tool for us, but it also is an expense to the city. Just looking at this, this takes all of the water main breaks that you saw in the previous graph and plots them out by decade of pipe. So the pipe decade broke, the decade, the pipe. You know what I'm saying. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, it's been a late night. So there have been 148 breaks on pipe installed in the 60s and 50s. We estimate at about $7,000 per break. Some are much more expensive, some are less. That's over $1 million in repair costs just to fix water mains. Not to replace them, just put a Band-Aid on them. Costs over $1 million. This graph that we, that is in your packet is probably the most telling. And once I had the engineers explain it to me, it really tells a great story. Each one of those dots is a year. So between 2020 and 2040, it is expected that the city will have 35, 31 miles of water main that will be at or beyond its life expectancy. And that is 70 years, not 50. So the, the, the point behind this, or the purpose behind this is to show that the orange dots are if we do nothing. We didn't, we don't put any effort into replacing any pipes. We're gonna have all of that pipe, you know, each year is about a mile and a half of pipe that will be failing. And those water main breaks will come more, will happen more frequent, and they will be more severe. Another cost that I haven't included in here is water costs. So every drop of water that comes to us from Jawa, we pay for. And that doesn't matter if it flows out into the street, we still pay for that. So. So to give you a little background, that's a little bit about our water system right now. Rolling back to 2015, the city did a water and sewer rate study. The reason we did the, the reason the rate study was done was because that was the fund balance projection. The red line's what we wanted, the blue line was what we were gonna have. So there were two solutions presented at that time. The option that the council chose was to do a slight increase in water rates each year and issue an infrastructure bond. So the first, the first, the first solution was to increase rates. So you'll notice that each year, the rates went up, and if you do the math, it's 7%. Every year it went up 7%. That was in an effort to stabilize water rates. Expenses were going up, failures were occurring, and the revenues were not exceeding our expenses. At the same time, the council made a decision in conjunction with the fire stations to issue an infrastructure bond. The reason they did an infrastructure bond is they were able to use it on, on a variety of uses. So the city chose to use it on two, two fire stations. And the leftover funding went to water main replacements. So you see a big increase in fund balance and then a steady decline. Well, the steady decline is us spending it. We did probably the biggest amount of water main replacement that has been done in the city in many years. We replaced all the water main on Arbor Drive. We replaced the entire subdivision of Waverly, Waverly subdivision near the high school. We replaced all the water main on Plum Grove Drive and on South Street here in, on the east side of town. So we had a great, about two and a half year capital program where we replaced a ton of water main. But what you see now is that that fund balance is back down to what we want. Well, a conversation for another day when we get into the weeds about financing, you will see that when we project out from now, five years, by the end of the, by the fifth year, we are again below fund balance policy. And, and that is because the cost of everything is going up, and our, our rates have not been increased in three years. I think three, 2019 was the last year we increased the rates. So, so I just tell you that because there, there is something we are going to have to do as a, as a, as a community to invest more money into our water infrastructure. Excuse me. This was gonna be a really cool item, but it's not now. So the other thing that happened in 2014, the city joined the GIS consortium. You remember the water rate study was done in 2015. So when we, as Public Works, worked with the consultant and the finance department to establish our water rate study, the work we did on the capital plan at that time was to right-size the projects, basically to determine the projects we actually really planned to do, because it used to be used as a placeholder, and to make sure the funding levels were balanced year over year. That's all we did. We didn't assess need because we didn't even have a GIS system to be able to evaluate that. So now, we have this tool, we're able to evaluate our system. There's a snapshot of, of the community just to the west, east of us. You'll see all those pink dots. Those are all water main breaks. We can use that as a factor. We also have a tool, these are actually two separate screens, but what you can do, and I wish I could walk up there, but there are, there are different criterias we can establish. So ultimately, we can weed out all the water main and just find the worst of the worst. So what is highlighted there is I only wanted to see water main that was cast iron and was four inch or six inch. Because when it's cast iron, I know it's the oldest kind of pipe. So that helps me identify kind of a, and, and help me fund my, a worst to, worst is first philosophy for replacement. So we can take care of our worst areas because we have the data kind of driving those decisions. I bring that up because to establish a GIS system, who had, I mean, our guys, when I started here up till about mid-2016, would not throw away their paper maps. So they were using their paper maps as far as early as 2016, mid-2016. I'm very pleased to say our guys have long thrown those away, and they are blowing everybody out of the water with how to use this and how to use this to collect data, to store data, to evaluate systems. They're, they're a cut above everybody else in the consortium as far as how they're using this data. So the idea is we now have the ability to plan a long-term program to actually do an annual replacement program, very much like we do our street resurfacing program, which to the best of my knowledge has not been done historically here. We've been more reactive. You know, an area will find a bunch of water main breaks in an area and will plan to do it, and then not plan to do something for five years after. So that's one of the reasons we're here. This is just to show, we do have water main replacement projects in our program. But again, we're budgeting less than $500,000 every year. And $500,000 doesn't even get you a half of a mile of pipe. So understanding the proper funding level. This is an estimate done by consulting engineer with very minimal time to talk to them about what our needs are versus what our, not what our needs are, versus what our capability of spending is versus how we fund it, whether it be by, by bonding or whatever the different scenarios are. But based on our current system, the information that we currently have that was generated through the water modeling and the, the rate study, the engineer is projecting that we need to be replacing one and a half miles of pipe, which equals about, excuse me, two and three-quarter million dollars per year. And that gets us to that blue line, which is much more manageable. A much more manageable program and much, provides much less interruption to service due to water main breaks. And, you know, much like a, you know, a police department fleet or a fire department fleet, you don't buy all your vehicles in the same year. Because when they all are getting old and having to be retired, you don't want to have to replace them all in the same year. And this, this program would propose just taking little bites of the apple and getting us into a more manageable program. So, I'm sorry, I went fast. I think that's where I was. So, so I, I, I know it's a serious issue. I understand that there's a big component of funding discussion for long-term. And the reason I put the keep calm is we are no different than a lot of communities in the area. We are not unique in this. However, if you looked at the map that I provided in your, in your packet, the red piping on that map are, is pipe that currently is over 50 years old. And if we don't put together a plan that looks at an annual replacement every year, whether we, whether it's, as you indicated, with some long-term bonding, whether there's a fee assessed, or whatever other funding strategies that we talk about in the future, that needs to be considered. And the whole reason I'm bringing it tonight is we have to start reporting on how we're using the ARPA funds. I understand there's a desire to use it for other things. I understand that, appreciate it, and I'm not opposed to it. I just want the council to understand the situation with the water main. So because it is permitted to be used on water main replacement, being able to use this money and other funding that we have available to us over the next couple of years may help us build that plan and not lose time in, in the process. So that's why I'm bringing it to you today, is really from that perspective, to just put it in your mind that it may be a good idea to use at least a percentage of it on our utilities. So I'm done. Questions?
Thank you, Director Horn.
The best I could, Mayor, I'm sorry.
We're moving it along.
Okay.
Any questions for Director Horn on this? Alderman O'Brien?
No, I was just gonna say, thanks for that. I think this is a great example, is I mean, even ratcheting it back to, it said failure at 70 years, and we've got, I just took it back one more decade saying, like going to the 56th. That's roughly 70%. When you add in that 80s decade, that's when we get, so. 70% of our infrastructure underneath the streets are at the near failure point. So I think this certainly highlights a valid concern we have to think about.
Yeah, appreciate that. And as I mentioned back in February, on, on the time when I did receive another notice of, of grants, the Department of Transportation put out $1.5 billion that we can apply for these grants specifically for water mains. And so, yes, we can look at aspects of the ARPA funding, but there are many a conduit of resources for funding to help us with this as well, which I know you're looking into.
Yeah, we have that whole, build, build a better America, build.
Build Back Better?
Yeah, yeah. I have that whole packet. Again, you know, certainly we want to take as many opportunities as we can in that regard. The, the only concern I have regarding that is it, they haven't released the money yet. They just, they're telling us all the things that we can apply for, and it really still hasn't been approved. And my, I, I don't want to hang our hat on what could be and then miss an opportunity. And, and again, I, I'm, this is, this problem took 70 years to occur. It's not gonna be fixed in 10 years. It's a, a, you know, we will long be retired, and all new councils and all new staffs will be handling this problem for years to come. My goal is to get us on the right trajectory to start planning a quarterly, build a program that people in the future can build off of.
And just one more point about the Department of Transportation and the RACE grant. That, that is accepting applications up until April 14th, so we have about a month left for that. And I hope we're staying on top of these. Any other questions?
Can I just ask one thing to clarify, Director Horn? The, because the number, the other number that really jumped out at me were the 148 Band-Aids we put on to the tune of like 1.1 million. What was that year? And I might have missed it in your slide. Was that over the last 10 years? Because I know the pipes burst were from 50s and 60s. But that was another light bulb that I wanted for me. The estimates are 2.75 a year for the next several years, but we're spending 1.1 million every two years to put Band-Aids on it.
It's a 10, it's a 10-year span. That was 2012 to 2022. It's actually more like nine years.
Okay.
But, but again, we also only counted the breaks on the mains. So for example, there's a pipe called Transite that was put in after cast iron was eliminated. And because of the material, it erodes where the service connects to the main, and that pops off because it erodes. Well, we don't count that as a water main break. That's a service break. So the, the dollar amount for those actually could kind of go up. But, I mean, those are things you're never gonna get away from unless, you know, you were established in the 80, now 2000s. But we're all, all these communities, older Cook County communities, all have older water main put in in the, where the majority of them were built between the 50s and the 70s. And that, that's just a reality. Quite honestly, this is a program that we should have been talking about 25 years ago. But we didn't, and it's okay. I mean, but, but the idea is, when I said keep calm and question mark, we can keep calm and plan for the future, or we can keep calm and bury our head in the sand and hope it gets handled by future councils or future staffs. And I, I would discourage that.
And so as far as next steps, so this will come back to the council. And I think our staff will begin working on a plan that'll get incorporated with our capital planning process as well as budgeting. With respect to the ARPA component of this discussion, we'll come back with a recommendation to the city council on how we handle the ARPA breakdowns. As Director Horn mentioned, we are coming up on a timeline where we are required to report how we utilize that ARPA funds that have been distributed and will be distributed to the municipality. So we'll certainly come back to the council with a recommendation, but we did want to bring this to your attention and just make the council aware that investment into our, our water infrastructure is something that we're looking at heavily, and the ARPA funds are a good opportunity to be a kickstart into that.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. Any other questions on, on this, this update, this presentation? If not, then we're gonna move forward to, I think, thank you, Director Horn. We're gonna move on to our, our sixth and final item, which is the Personnel Rules and Regulations for the City of Rolling Meadows. As the council knows, this was postponed from late last year until we had our city manager settle in and have exposure to this documentation. And one of the initial reasons I wanted to see this come before the council, the first aspect is that the council should be reviewing this annually in conjunction with the city manager. And as, as we go through the year and we approve ordinances and make decisions as a council, each of those are a single snapshot, and it's a piece to the puzzle. And then when we're able to look at the Personnel Rules and Regulations collectively or comprehensively, then we get to see as a whole picture of what we've just made decisions on and how that impacts either staff or the operations as a whole. And so Manager Sabo has had now three months about, not, not really, but to settle in and begin examining this. And so from this point forward, I'll, I'll let you take it from here and see what you've discovered.
Sure. Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate the, the introduction. So as the council's aware, I'm, I'm a newcomer to the organization. So I had an opportunity to take a look at this from an outsider coming in. And just like many of you, I'm sure, have experienced, it is not an easy document to read. Much of that has to do with the fact that there have been a number of ordinances that were passed that amended the rules and regulations over the course of years. They weren't necessarily written into the actual document itself. They were appended to the beginning. At this point, this document is about 15 and a half years old from when it was originally debuted by the city. As the mayor indicated, you know, I, I did spend quite a bit of time going through it. All of these notes and red Post-its and all of these things are all different items that I've identified as needing a bit of a closer look. Whether that be ensuring that the provisions included within here align with current laws as set forth by FLSA, FMLA, all of the different federal laws that exist that pertain to employment. Some of them I'd need to run past our, our city attorney just to make sure that they are aligned with current law. And others, it's just a matter of making sure that this policy manual aligns with the way that we are currently structured. the way that we are currently structured. Um, you know, it, it reflects our current, uh, collective bargaining environment, et cetera. Um, to that extent as well, I know that the council previously, um, back when this item was postponed, had an ordinance that was proposed that included, um, elimination of certain provisions from within the manual. And I did include those in my staff report, that's in the agenda this evening. So, um, in my review of that, I, I have had an opportunity to discuss it a bit with, with our team, and if that's something that the council desires to move forward on, um, we certainly can bring that ordinance back for the city council to consider. Um, the document update, my goal is to bring this back to the city council this year, revised, and it be the Personnel Rules and Regulations of 2022. Moving forward in the way that we amend the document, it would be my goal to make those revisions within the document with footnotes that identify when amendments were made. Um, I think that as a user, um, and as, you know, for the public's use, it, it just makes the document significantly easier to read. Um, all those beings, all those things considered, um, this document does govern, um, the rules and regulations for positions that are not collectively bargained. Um, these are typically your management and supervisory staff as well as, uh, certain specified, uh, positions who are, uh, for example, executive assistants. And so, the, the document itself does outline a number of different components from paid time off to, um, employee conduct, uh, sexual harassment, et cetera. It is all encompassing. Um, it's my goal, as I mentioned, to come back to the council with some recommendations as far as updates, um, potential revisions, and, and just to modernize and make sure that the, the document itself does align, um, with current practices, um, and also does make sure that it, we do provide a competitive, uh, working environment, uh, that will not only retain our existing employees, but also be an attractive, uh, employment location for individuals looking to come and join us. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, there, there are a number of, of components in here that I've identified through my research. Um, being that, you know, I'm, I'm into my third month here, there, this amongst the many other projects and tasks, along with getting to know the organization, there's, there's been quite a bit of work I've been doing. But nonetheless, um, I wanted to bring to the council and make everyone aware that I have been working through this and sharing occasional updates with the mayor as well of, of things that I've, I've observed and noted.
Thank you for that, Manager Sabo, and, and we do expect it to be a continued conversation. And the, I think the, the collaborative nature of, of yourself, your observations, and the council, enabling city and staff to operate efficiently and be reflective of, of a modern organization, one that, that balances both the, the privileges and the rights of the employees and creates an environment of satisfaction, but also, more importantly, because we're preoccupied in our, our day jobs, and so we come to city council meetings, and there's ordinances that, that we pass as a city council, and at the time over the weekend, we review them, we make decisions based on staff recommendation. But when the year passes, we, we, I personally speaking only, we, I don't see the full picture of what we've done in terms of our impact to the city operationally, organizationally. But as our obligation to review this handbook as a council should be done every year, it will help us get a better understanding as to all that we've, we've created in terms of policy for those who operate within these confines to operate by honor to, and then hopefully make sure that it's, it's creating a positive feedback loop that's being experienced out in the community as a result of our actions. Any questions or comments for Manager Sabo?
No, I, I, I look forward to this, 'cause I know it's no small feat. My only ask is, could we get like a redlined version when we go through this? 'Cause what I had some angst over in the three parts that were pulled out for us in November to look at, seemed like it was dealing with our first responders in Public Works. And that gave me some angst, 'cause I didn't see what was old, what was new, 'cause it is a mess. Let's call it what it is. If we could get a redlined version, 'cause I did not have the confidence that I was understanding what was being asked of us in November, so I was glad it was pulled, because it seemed to be dealing with obviously, police, fire, and Public Works, everybody that makes the city run. So if we could get some type of redlined version, I don't need to see your comments to your internal review, but just a redlined version of what we're actually looking at changing, I'd feel more comfortable with that.
So one of the biggest things is allowing Manager Sabo time to actually settle into his role, and then have the bandwidth to review this document as a living, breathing document, and whether or not it's being reflected experientially in the confines of the operation, or it's a document that's stood alone and it's, it's just been created in, in an exercise of creation and not necessarily benefiting the organization or Manager Sabo in his capacity. So, we'll, we'll revisit this as, as you get to settle in and dig into this deeper, but absolutely have some sort of legacy in red lines so we can understand what we're looking at, what it was to what it's evolved into.
Right. 'Cause it was like, what's better, better one or better two? Like the eye doctor, and I was having a hard time looking at what the changes actually were.
Yeah, and certainly this will come back as I, one of the things, I, I have the Word file for this now, so it's just a matter of putting track changes in there and beginning...
That's right, it's just time to find the Word file.
It, it was somewhere dug, I had to dig into it, but I found it. So I, I will provide all of the red lines as far as things that get updated, and, you know, it, it, given the volume and how much information, it may be, you know, as, as things are, are updated, it may come back to you in portions. There may be some reorganization of how the chapters are laid out. But nonetheless, you know, certainly it'll be a before and after picture for the council so you have an educated decision-making process.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman, please, you know?
Thank you. So, it's late, but, um, to recollect, that this kinda brought, got brought up to our attention because we were questioning vacation carryover. Am I correct? Is this? No, 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 I know that. But this entire document and how it kinda got brought up to us and what our policy was, and so...
Not to my knowledge, not to my recollection.
Okay. See, I told you it was late. And what our policy, Attorney Wolf, maybe you can help us, that we were questioning, um, because we had to do a payout for vacation time, and so we were questioning, what was the policy?
Yes.
In severance? And that's how this got brought up, correct?
It's not specific to policy, so what happened was, over the summer, we were dealing with separations.
Separations, yep.
And those separations, uh, had financial components attached to them, and we were trying to understand how the financial levels accumulated to what they were and the expectation that they be distributed. And it was brought to our attention as a city council that we should be reviewing this policy, this handbook annually in conjunction with the budget. Not approving the budget and the handbook just getting slid into the budget as in de facto exo, okay, it fits because you approved the budget, so now the handbook automatically flies by. But these two things should be standalone and separate and examined by the council, so that way we understand how they make sense. Attorney Wolf, you have more or different to add, you're more than welcome to.
Just, uh, just more specificity to it. So, it, um, it was really related to the pay plan that's identified in the handbook, and that is something that the council had to review annually. And, um, and that wasn't occurring outside of just a review of the overall budget approval. So that's, that's why this issue was brought to light. In addition, because of the certain separations, um, there were some recommendations regarding, um, provisions and those types of agreements that could go in a personnel handbook, um, and, uh, those changes can be part of the overall comprehensive review, uh, of the personnel manual that, that the manager does now.
And, and to that effect, and I've had the conversation with Mayor Gallo about the pay plan itself, um, customary communities will put together a resolution that's brought to the council as part of that budgetary process annually, where the compensation plan for the city is approved, and that outlines the pay scales as well as the compensation, the different steps and levels. Some of those are collectively bargained, as I said before, so they're stipulated within those types of union agreements. Others, as are non-collectively bargained and governed by the rules and regs, are identified as well. So that's something that I'm, I'm gonna be working with our team to put together, and that'll come back to the council as part of the budgeting process.
Hey, that answered my question. That was a long way of answering my question, 'cause I, I, I know it's late, but I was remembering that we had to review something before our next budget, I couldn't remember exactly what it was, and I knew you'd need time to review this entire document and make revisions, but there was something that we needed to review as a council with the budget. So, thank you. That's, you answered exactly it, so, thank you.
Good, happy to hear.
Together we get it.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? If not, it's been a long evening. Thank you all for, for sticking with us on this, but I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Everybody, that's unanimous. All those in favor, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.